Board, the meeting for the school board for Santa Barbara School Districts for Tuesday, August 22, 2006. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to just introduce our Spanish translator, I think we have present? Yes, thank you. Would you come forward and introduce yourself? Thank you.
Si, buenas tardes y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita un intérprete en español, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono.
Thank you. Gracias. Okay, also I would like to remind the public that we have headsets for anyone who needs assistive hearing technology and you can just let us know and we will provide you with them. Announcements from closed session, the board did not take any reportable action in our closed session this evening, so there is nothing to report out. That brings us to item C5, Acceptance of Donations. Move to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. And once again, we want to reiterate our appreciation to our very generous community for everything that they do for our district. Item C6, Introductions, Proclamations, Presentations, and Recognizations, and this falls to Dr. Sarvis.
We have no introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions tonight.
Oh!
But since school begins Monday, we will soon.
Great. And that's just, that's one of our reminders, is that school begins Monday. Okay, that brings us to the superintendent report, and I know we have a report.
That's right. School begins Monday. And we are ready. Since the new school year is right around the corner, we've held several professional development days. Last week, we had a medical administrative activities training, a full-day management meeting focusing on district focus goals, and a two-day breakthrough training for district administrators and their secretaries, primarily to get principals into the classrooms more to coach the instructional process, also related directly to board focus goals. This morning, almost 400 elementary teachers participated in a staff in-service with Susanna Dutro on focused element, English language development for English learners, goal number two on our district focus goals. And this Thursday, two days from now, almost 600 secondary teachers will participate in a staff in-service with Dr. Tim Cannold on professional learning communities. Both of these in-services are also directly related to board focus goals. Board members are welcome to attend Thursday's meeting. It will be beginning at 8:30 at the Marjory Luke. Come early if you'd like to eat or have a cup of coffee. At 6:30 this evening, we had, well, 6:50 this evening, we had a reception for new principals in the districts. We welcomed Mark Swanetts, principal at Dos Pueblos High School, John Beckio at Santa Barbara Junior High School, Amy Elzina at Santa Barbara Community Academy, and Kate Ford at Peabody Charter School. The board was presented at our last board meeting with the draft report of the UNIDev feasibility study on the Hidden Valley and Tatum properties. The draft feasibility study can be accessed in several ways. It's on the district website, sbsdk12.org. Hard copy is also available in the district office. It's out here in the foyer. And by the end of this week, it will be on display at four libraries, the downtown public library, Galita Branch, the Eastside Branch, and the Montecito Branch libraries. If board members of the public have questions or comments about the study, we would like those comments emailed to the feasibility study at the district website, sbsdk12.org, or mailed to the district office under the title, "Hidden Valley and Tatum Feasibility Analysis." Please direct that to Facilities and Operations Department, Santa Barbara School Districts. It's the administration building. Our address here is 720 Santa Barbara Street, Santa Barbara, California, 93101. The public comment period is until the end of September. Board members are requested to send their comments to me directly. And board members, I need to get those to UNIDev to make sure that they answer those in a timely way. Is it possible that I can have those by the end of this next week? Good.
Yes, I think we're all saying yes.
It's possible.
You didn't say probably.
Well, I hope you can. Thank you. The Board Brief. Generally, on the second and fourth Friday of each month, my office issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on school and district matters. A copy is on display in the reception area or can be provided through the superintendent's office. I would like to call the board's attention to two items on the August 11 Board Brief. One was the result of the Santa Barbara Community Academy parent survey administered to parents and students in grades K through six at the Community Academy. 176 responses were received, and I was very interested to see the results of that survey. Second, Dave Hetjung provided a recap of unused site assessment fees paid and scheduled to be paid to the district's Tatum and Hidden Valley properties, of four of the district's Tatum and Hidden Valley properties. In fact, the properties cost the districts almost $100,000 per year, just sitting there. Update on Board of Education candidates. August 16 was the deadline for board candidates to file their declaration of candidacy for the November election. The county elections office indicates that six candidates filed papers, Suzie Coffin, Roseanne Crawford, Thinker Bill Hackett, Magdalena Maddox, Robert Noel, and Kate Parker. We will be inviting the candidates to attend an orientation session in September, meet district office administrators to learn more about the operations of different departments, and we will provide materials for the candidates. On August 31, that's coming right up, the California Department of Education will release the 2005-06 Academic Performance Report, including the 2006 API, which is the Academic Performance Index, the AYP, which is the Growth Report for Adequate Yearly Progress, and PI, the Report for Program Improvement. These are greatly anticipated by districts across the state of California, and we're anxious to see our results. And that's it for tonight's superintendent report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. We will look forward to those reports. Okay, that brings us to item C8, Correspondence. Is there any correspondence from board members, that board members would like to bring forward at this time? Hearing none, we will move on to item C9, Public Comment. I believe we do have a number of individuals who have submitted forms to speak during public comment.
We do.
Kenneth Locke, followed by Brian Tangue.
Okay, and I'll remind you at this time that we will, you do have three minutes to speak. There is a little light on the podium that turns red when your time is up. I will also give you a 30-second heads-up that you will have 30 seconds left, okay? Thank you.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I've been speaking with city council, arts commission, and I think that I'm going to work and explain some things to the community to kind of unify the arts and explain the basis of a standard in relation to education kind of situation, which presently there isn't. One thing I brought before the arts commission is the whole concept of how we value the art object and how we appraise a value. There is no standard for appraisal of art. It's left to kind of this free marketplace that we have here. There's no true value valuation. There's no educational standard for the arts. I'm claiming to be a genius in relation to the next Renaissance, where we actually become integrated in relation to art science. The thing that I'm going to work on is the whole concept of the avant-garde, the artists who are on the cutting edge through the abstract art movement in relation to the evolution of human consciousness. Now, what I'm claiming to be is the last of them. So from my perspective, I can go back into history and actually explain who actually made a contribution to the success that I had, which, so the, as I mentioned at the city council today, there's kind of like, in relation to like tennis, there's kind of like A division, B, C division kind of thing. The avant-garde are kind of like the A division. They're the artists who actually, we can say that actually contributed, made a contribution to this, to the evolution and to the ultimate, to prize. And I explained my finishing the race in relation to me witnessing enlightenment through the philosophy of aesthetics. It gets pretty scholarly, but right now, again, the arts do not have, really, they don't understand where it begins or ends. In relation to the avant-garde, the artists who were on the cutting edge, we can understand them as being self-educated. I got 30 seconds, okay? And the, so the whole basis of they were not, they didn't have a teacher. I didn't have a teacher. I didn't learn my things through a university, self-taught type of thing. And I'm claiming to actually be the first artist to actually graduate art and actually show the whole basis of what a master of art is. Right now, the whole concept of our mastery is in relation to somebody who is proficient within the arts. It's, you can't serve two masters. I'll keep you up to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke.
Brian Tangue, followed by Richard Foster.
Brian Tangue, CSEA president. Where's the money? Unprecedented K-12 funding in the '06-'07 state budget, a 5.92 percent COLA, 300 million in equalization, 300 million for deficit reduction, millions more for mandate reimbursement. My colleagues in neighboring Galita and the county office of education are negotiating near double-digit pay increases, while in the Santa Barbara School Districts, all we hear is, "We have no money." The budget problem is attributed to declining enrollment, but I'm beginning to wonder if declining enrollment is only part of the problem. Where's the money? Today, my members are facing a staggering 146 percent increase in their monthly contribution for health insurance. How can classified employees, the lowest-paid employees in this district, afford a monthly hike from $89 to $238, particularly when we're told that a salary increase is out of the question? How can employees maintain morale when they're working hard to provide vital services and yet losing ground economically? And even worse, when they suspect that next year will only bring more of the same? As reported in the Santa Barbara news press, the district's solution to its fiscal trainwreck appears to be the same shop-worn tactics of the past: cuts to library services, cuts to health assistance, cuts to whatever remains of our music programs, but curiously, no proposed cuts in district management. I never thought I'd miss Deborah Flores, but tonight I miss her. Not her personal style, but her leadership, her ability to take meaningful action when action is required. When we were in similar straits several years ago, Dr. Flores implemented a spending and hiring freeze, and when it came to cutting staff, the pain was shared among management, certificated, and classified staff. Compare what the district office administrative staff looked like under Dr. Flores with the way it looks today. We have a bumper crop of directors, assistant superintendents, and coordinators, and we still have a love affair with expensive consultants. But when the cuts are reported in the newspaper, only one group is targeted, the classified workers providing essential services to students. Where is the will to use every inch of fiscal latitude available under the single district resolution? Where is the political will to stop tap dancing around a school closure? And where is the moral leadership to look hard at those who sit far from the classroom and yet earn the highest salaries?
30 seconds.
Where's the money? Where did it all go? The public should want to know. The public should demand to know. The public has a right to know.
Thank you, Mr. Tangue.
Richard Foster, followed by Steve Thompson.
Good evening, board. I'm Richard Foster. Having come and complained to you on many occasions about work violations at Dos Pueblos and having been Dr. Sarvis's ear and Nancy Harder's on the phone and Dave's, I just wanted to come back and say, because, you know, if you complain, you got to speak up when it starts working right. And since April, they've really been great out there. Larry Vanish said that Carl Mayrose really laid into them and read them the law, and if they've been violating it, they've been doing it very quietly. And I want, and Dave's always been very responsive to me, even though I'm sure he's loath to hear from me some mornings, but he's always been very good about getting back and responding to me. And so I want to thank both Carl and Dave for making sure the neighborhood's quiet in the morning. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Steve Thompson, followed by Karen Hess.
My name's Steve Thompson. I'm just starting my ninth year employed here at the district in the maintenance department. I'm also the vice president of our local CSEA chapter. I wanted to be here to support my fellow members tonight, but there's two issues I've always wanted to talk to the board about, and I'm going to address one of them tonight while I'm here. I feel that it's an outdated policy to not allow hats to be worn in the junior high schools. As a skin cancer survivor, I've become quite aware of what the sun can do to someone's skin, and most of the damage that's done and can't be reversed happens when a kid is young. So I would just like the board to consider perhaps making part of the PE uniform a crushable hat, maybe nondescript color, maybe with numbers on them perhaps if you need to be able to identify the kids, and perhaps providing shaded areas for lunch to be eaten. And I think that would be a step into the 20th century. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Karen Hess.
I'm a classified employee working at Dos Pueblos High School in special education. I've been here with your district for approximately six years and then the Alameda School District for seven. So I know what the situation is in regards to instructional aides, and we're six-hour employees, nine months a year, so our pay salary is, you know, comparative with the rest of the state. However, I'm here tonight to talk to you and really plead with you to ask you to look into the insurance situation. I've already talked to two instructional aides at Dos Pueblos who told me that they will not be able to afford to pay their rent if the increase goes up. This is a really dangerous situation, I think, for all classified, not just myself, but the rest of us. And so that's why I'm here tonight, to ask you to please consider looking into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hess.
I have a question for the president. Did I understand that E2 was being taken from the agenda?
Yes.
We have a speaker slip for E2. Since it's not on the agenda anymore, wondering if she wants to speak now or wait till we put it back on the agenda. You'll wait.
Okay, that concludes public comment then. We will move on to our consent agenda. I want to thank those members of the public who came and spoke this evening. We appreciate your involvement in this process.
Madam President, on D1, the last page on the minutes was omitted. You have a copy of it on the dais. It's on the side table. You could include it tonight, or we can return it to the next agenda.
What is the pleasure of the board? Would you like to quickly review these and include them in our vote tonight? Yes, okay.
I have a question. I don't recall the outcome of this discussion earlier. Thank you, Pat, for taking the long hit, our minutes. It is a little unmining, seems to be, to be. Here we are, late August, moving into May 16.
I see that.
And minutes from May 30. I don't remember what went on between May 16 and May 30. I think we really need to close the time line.
Point well taken.
Okay, are we ready to vote on consent agenda?
Yes. Pull D2 and D10.
Okay.
I'll move to approve, unless anybody else wants to.
Were there any other items that people wish to pull? Okay, then.
I move to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, all the items, remaining items were passed, 5-0. For anyone who wishes to stay for the remainder of the meeting, item D2 and item D10 will be taken up at the end of this meeting. Okay, that brings us to our action agenda. And I do want to, we'll start with item E1, but I do want to reiterate that item E2 has been pulled from this evening's agenda. There are some, there's some information that we had hoped to have by this evening and that is not available, so we will be taking that item up at a future meeting. We'll begin with item E1, Approval of the District's Initial Collective Bargaining Proposal with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. Dr. Robertson will be giving us information.
Dr. Robertson will present this.
Thank you, and good evening. This is the second night that we have asked, or put the initial proposal for negotiations from the district to SBTA for the public to consider and speak to if they so needed. I'm asking tonight for the school board to approve this initial proposal so I can go forward and continue to negotiate with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association.
Ms. Mellicamp, do we have any public comment on this? Okay, board members?
No, I'll move to approve.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Robertson. Okay, that brings us to item E3, Public Hearing on the Intent to Convey Easement to the City of Santa Barbara for Accessible Drop-Off and Sidewalk Improvements on Robin Street and Harding Elementary School. Mr. Hetjung will give us information on this.
Yes, Dr. Sarvis, board members, I'd like to request that this item wait until 8 o'clock. It has been advertised in the newspaper under legal documents as an 8 o'clock hearing, and there may be some people that show up that want to speak to this based on that public advertisement.
Thank you, Mr. Hetjung. That's a very good point. We're not used to being in the position of being ahead of schedule. So we will table this item for the time being, and we can move on to our student expulsion cases.
In the case of '05-'06-97, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries 5-0.
In the case of '06-'07-01, move to approve findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0.
In the case of '05-'06-101, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0.
In the case of '05-'06-102, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0.
In the case of '05-'06-104, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0.
In the case of '05-'06-92, move to suspend the expulsion with the stipulation that the student meet the rehabilitation plan and not return to the home high school.
I'll second that.
Did you mean home high school, Mrs. Rodriguez, or the home high school campus?
Yes.
Yes.
I think it's an important distinction.
Home high school campus.
It's an important distinction, yes. Thank you.
And I'll second that, yes.
Okay, so the motion is to suspend the expulsion with the stipulation that the student meet the requirements of the rehabilitation plan and that the student not return to the home high school campus.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries 5-0.
In the case of...
I'm going to throw something out here. In the case of '05-'06-105, I would like to delay action on the item so that the board may consult with counsel and that the student be placed on home hos, I'm sorry, on independent study until the board is able to consult with counsel.
Second.
Who seconded that?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, thank you very much. Those were some difficult cases, so I'm glad we were able to come to some resolution on those. We can move on then to the conference agenda, and I believe our first item on the conference agenda, F1, is a request to address the board by Richard A. Foster regarding the Dos Pueblos High School stadium lighting. So, Mr. Foster, we can welcome you back up to the podium.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Rich Foster. I'm a neighbor of Dos Pueblos High School, and I've spoken here before. I hope you each have a little packet here. Most of the exhibits at the back are just documentary. When I make reference to something, I made a copy of what I was referencing so that you would have it if you should decide to ever look at it. But this is regarding the lighting at Dos Pueblos High School Stadium. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned that the people of the district who make bond measures possible are not receiving the product which was bid for and promised by the contractor. The taxpayer deserves vigilance by the staff, the bond oversight committee, and this board to see that the projects conform to specifications, yet at least in regards to stadium lights at Dos Pueblos, this has been sadly lacking. Here's a list of shortcomings, not a short list, but a short list of short ones. The test that was performed by Musco Lightings, August 16, 2005, was not properly performed, and the report was inaccurate. It's attached as exhibit A and B, part of it is. Musco used only one light meter and claimed all shots were taken 150 feet from the track. This report had test shots behind the bleachers with twice the intensity of shots that were taken directly at the lights. Later, WLC claimed the shots were not taken at 150 feet, but taken at the fall line. The negative deck also requires that the location of all shots be identifiable. However, in the report I caught, the report, the copy of the report I got from this office, that is impossible. Also, in midfield, there's nine grid points that are below the required 50-foot candle, which we'll address again later. TMD and engineering signed off as there being no exceptions noted on February 24, 2006, despite the fact that the lights have six locations that exceeded the gradient differential in the specifications of Penix A, and the whole center of the football field is lighted below specifications. I spoke with their engineers, Nestor Ignacio, the following Monday after he filed that report, and he expressed surprise that gradients exceeded those in the specifications adopted by the board. Staff later told me he wrote a letter stating he did not feel these exceptions were significant. That is... That is not the same as what he stamped on the documents, no exceptions. It is extremely troubling that the district staff was willing to accept this glaringly wrong report and substandard lighting performance until I filed a written complaint. In response to this complaint, WLC Architects resident architectural representative, Rick Legree, defended the first report in a letter dated April 17th, 2006. And there's a copy of that letter attached as exhibit D, claiming this testing was truthful and accurate. Yet, he observed the test and didn't bother to note that it was not compliant to the negative deck, but then, in fact, only one light meter had been used. In the same letter, he claimed that exceeding the specifications of the maximum gradient by any two, between any two points, by 12% was acceptable. This level of acceptable error may explain why pre-construction estimates were so absurdly low. How much error is acceptable? Furthermore, WLC claims they could interpret, quote, "interpret specifications and decide matters concerning performance." The point of having specifications is to not have to interpret them. Why defend a test which is improperly done? Unfortunately, when I brought this failure to attention, the bond oversight committee, they were completely disinterested. In fact, they were more concerned with how to promote another bond measure, and I must agree with committee member Mr. Zavandi, who was paraphrased in the minutes of the April 19th meeting as saying, quote, "He did not feel the committee was doing its job concerning overseeing the district." Sadly, I must concur with him. If they wish to promote a new bond measure, good stewardship would be an excellent place to start. To their credit, the staff did institute a second lighting test, which was performed June 1st. It's attached as exhibit F. However, this report was neither submitted nor reviewed nor approved by the engineers from TMD. It's of note that in this test, shots taken 150 feet from the track significantly changed. Test shots in the bleach, shadow of the bleachers no longer showed twice the lighting levels. But if one looks at this report carefully, the results stretch the credulity of anyone but the most gullible. Seventy-one grid points were measured on the field. Forty-eight fell by two candle, foot candles. Nine fell by one foot candle. Four fell by three foot candles. One fell by five. Two were unchanged, and one rose by two, one rose by four. Miraculously, the light levels where it fell four, five, six, or even seven foot candles were exactly where there had been gradient differential problem. One might think that this was due to sloppy testing the first time, and now we have a better reading. But how do you get a light meter to read too much when aimed at a light? Error should always be in the lower direction. What's more mystifying is that despite the fact that 66 out of 71 points on this field fell and two were unchanged, light levels along the property line either remained constant or actually rose. I don't know how you get more lighting out of something that's falling. To believe significant change occurred only where it was necessary is certainly suspicious, more so when it's been established that Musco and WLC both tried to pass off a faulty test and an inaccurate report on the district. Lastly, there's the major issue that the lights failed to maintain 50-foot candles. In fact, across the middle of the field, seven of the 12 grid points are in the lower 40s. Yet, the district staff and WLC contend that this meets the criterion that the board adopted in Appendix A. Let us look at this specifically. In WLC's letter of April 17th, they claim they only have to average 50-foot candles over the entire field, but they average 66. To support this, they cite page 28 of the negative deck, wherein the author for Do-Deck and Associates used the word "average." However, in that same paragraph, the author refers the reader to Appendix A, where the author writes, "WLC, quote, 'provides explicit performance criteria.' The word 'average' does not appear in the specifications adopted in Appendix A, which were written not by Do-Deck, but by WLC. It clearly states the contractor will provide lights that meet or exceed the following entire-field 50-foot candles." If it were intended to be an average, then the word, and then an explicit description would use that word. But let's consider that claim. If the intent was only to average 50-foot candles, why did WLC design a system which is putting out 64-foot candles? This is almost a 30% extra factor. Is the district and taxpayers so awash in money that we can afford to expend 30% more energy than is deemed required? When glaring spill to the neighborhood was of major consideration, why would WLC design a system that puts out excessive amounts of light? Currently, the center of the field has readings as low as 43-foot candles. Overall, the field suffered about a two-foot candle drop in the 10 months during a very light year of use, and that's probably attributable to burn-in of the lights as they get established. Yet, the test by Musco showed test spots losing as much as seven foot candles. If that rate were to occur in the center of the field, it would be pitch black in six years. But that wouldn't be a problem. Using the claims of WLC and Musco, they would still meet specifications. In fact, one could eliminate every foot candle of light in the middle three rows of the field, and while standing there in pitch blackness at the 50-yard line, the field would still be averaging 52-foot candles over the entire field. To accept the claim by WLC architects and district staff that the intent was average foot candles is patently absurd. This is merely an attempt to avoid providing what was promised the taxpayer. The required performance you adopted has not been met. Yet, staff has been willing to accept this inferior performance because, as I has told by two staff members, they all felt pretty good about it. This district should never have closed out this project with this level of compliance. One can only wonder if substandard compliance is being accepted in other areas of Measure V's $100 million work. The taxpayer deserves an accounting. They also deserve what was promised and will be delivered. The public deserves efficient use of the district's million-dollar energy budget. And most of all, the board needs to convince the public that another bond measure would be due to need, not due to sloppy standards or poor compliance and enforcement. I would love to hear from staff. They've had an opportunity to read all these arguments in their emails over the last couple of months. Let's hear how a dark midfield could possibly be considered as being acceptable. I would be happy to take any questions from the board before staff responds, if they choose to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Do board members have any questions? Does staff wish to respond? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Foster. That brings us to our next item, item F two, request to address the board by Carolyn Renaud. I'm not sure I see Ms. Renaud present. This item was scheduled for 8:45, so we will need to come back to it. Let's see, where are we?
Well, we could go to F three then.
We can move ahead to F three. We can jump ahead and start our board policy readings. So, this is the first reading of board policy, 6142 Wellness, Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 3550, Food Service Child Nutrition Program, Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 3553, Free and Reduced Price Meals... I'm sorry. Free and Reduced Price Meals, Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 3554, Other Food Sales, Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 6142.7, Physical Education, Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 6142.8, Comprehensive Health Education. And...
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I know Ms. Badger is here, and I don't know if other members of the committee were planning on coming, but once again, we've hit an item. So, I don't know if Mr. Zettel can make his presentation, and we can take public comment later, or how we want to proceed.
Well, do you, I'm sorry, Ms. Badger, do you think that there are other members of the committee who were planning to attend? Okay. Perhaps it would be better then for us to take our 15-minute break that we have scheduled. Oh, F four?
Move ahead to the...
Okay, let's move on to F four. I'm sorry, we are kind of jumping all over our agenda today.
Bob Wolf, are you ready for that one?
But I think we can move ahead to F four and not upset our schedule too much.
Good, we can move ahead to that.
Okay. Thank you, Dr., Mr. Wolf.
Actually, I don't know if I can handle this.
It's awfully early.
Is this on? Okay. Well, good afternoon, or good evening, I guess I should say.
It feels so early, it seems like afternoon.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm going to discuss the 2006-2007 final budget for the state and the impact on the school district. You do have an attachment that's sort of an added-on to this presentation. It is available also as a supplement on the table. Okay, this year, the state didn't have to make a number of hard choices on expenditures due to the increase in revenue that was sort of unexpected this year. This isn't a situation that's necessarily going to continue in the current year or in the coming year. The economy is already starting to slow down. As of June, there was a 0.6% reduction in the revenues forecast. That's about $59 million to the state. The housing slowdown is evident in May. Home construction permitting is down 21% over the same time last year. Home sales down 19%. Here in Santa Barbara County, home sales are down 34%. As contrast, in LA County, it's about 11.6% downturn in home sales. The home prices have stayed relatively stable, so it looks like the prices are going to stagnate. And the payroll growth for the state was about 2,000 jobs. Did that change? The state's structural budget gap still exists. You've heard Mr. Angelides, one of the Democratic candidate for governor this year, have come up with a funding plan to sort of, in a broad brostokes, to replace that. But the fact of the matter remains is that the state still has more expenditures than it do revenues. This will impact the school districts eventually, as were political nature. The mid-year cut authority for the governor was not included in the budget package, so we don't need to anticipate mid-year cuts this year after the election, which is a good thing. The deficit still hovers around about $5 billion to the state. The tremendous growth that we've experienced that generated the budget this year is not sustainable. And in fact, that is borne out by the next couple of figures. I do have a couple of slides. This is the difference between the UCLA forecast and the Department of Finance forecast. UCLA is generally more accurate and has been more accurate in the past than the DOF. So, this is the personal income forecast changes. Here's the job market outlook changes. As you can see, everything's declining and dropping. This is the only one that's questionable with UCLA. They're showing a drop in the Consumer Price Index this year, which is sort of not necessarily understandable considering oil prices are still there, but maybe the housing costs are the ones that are driving this. You've heard a lot about MAU funding recently. Currently, the, there is no MAU funding included in the federal budget this year. In fact, that entire department isn't funded, has no budget. The federal budget, the federal government's budget isn't expected to be passed until sometime in December. It's election year politics at its best. The most recent indication is that's not, the only thing that's going to happen with the federal government is continuing resolutions. Under the continuing resolutions, the department that houses MAU does have funding for this year, so we can expect at least funding through this year or until. Both the Senate and the Assembly, or the, I'm sorry, the Senate or the House of Representatives presentations show no cuts whatsoever for MAU, so it's going to be between them and I guess the president this year. There is a website here on the bottom, it's lea.net, that has some information about the MAU funding and letters to write to your congressman if you would like to do so. The presentation is going to be on the budget impacts to the district. Make note that these are mostly all estimates and predictions because the state hasn't come through with any current funding. This is the supplement to the document. I tried to make it a very simple, real quick look at the changes in the budgets. You can see, we'll discuss these a little bit in detail later on. I just want you to note that here in the Title I, you can see a reduction from the elementary school district over our estimates to the budget. And you can see the major increase here in economic impact aid. So, there's been a huge increase in impact aid. That's because of the change of the way the state is counting students. Impact, the economic impact aid started out as a program to help socially, economically disadvantaged students. It sort of morphed into English learners. And if you were both, both English language learner and socially, economic, you only got counted once. Under the current changes in the new law, you're counted twice, which is what would increase, which would account for this big increase. It's also the state government recognizing that the federal government has cut Title I funding, and this is their attempt to try to backfill some of that loss. This is the impact in the high school, not as much. Some of the programs down here are the new programs, and you can see that we didn't budget anything for those because we don't know when they're coming through. Class size reduction is down a little bit for ninth grade. Okay, the revenue limit, as far as what we received, this is the COLA factors on the average school district in the state of California. The increases to the elementary school district and the secondary school district are indicated. Equalization is an attempt to bring the state, all the school districts in the state within a 90% range. They're about 66% done with doing this. Unfortunately, these equalization numbers are not necessarily going to be actually known until sometime next year, toward the end of the year, because they're based on the 06-07 P2 figures, which are in April, which hopefully, but these are as accurate as an estimate as we can get at this time. You can see here in Title I, the changes and the difference. We had a 2.1% decrease from what we budgeted this year, but overall, from last year, it's a 7% drop in funding for the elementary school district and a 4.4% decrease in funding in Title I. Conversely, the increases in the economic impact aid are shown there. This is the class size reduction for K three in the elementary school district. The funding has gone up, as shown here, $1,200 for a full-day class. The amount decreases proportionally for enrollment over 20.4 because in the state's mind, that rolls up to 21. You can see the estimated earnings and the estimated increase. I did look at this program to try to evaluate whether or not it was a viable program that was costing us money or not costing us money. What the bottom line comes down to is this $226,000 figure. We're actually to the good on that. So, it wouldn't, if we were to lose the K three program or decide not to do that anymore, it would actually cost us money to do that. Even though it doesn't fully fund itself, it does help a little. It does help a little bit. This is the current estimate from School Services of California. Some people think it's high, but based on this figure, these are the new numbers that the districts can expect. You see the increases that are indicated on the supplement that was added. Ninth grade class size reduction is the old Morgan Hart. You can see that the number of pupils, the amount per students is going up, and there's an average of 2.59. The interesting thing is when we evaluated this based on the same, on the same levels as the K three, we found out it was actually costing us about $240,000 to operate this program. You can, the high school district or the secondary districts are a little bit different. They run by periods, and so you'll see a large number of teacher periods. That divided by the five, I think, is what the count is, comes up with this many teachers, is what we're using. If we use the ratios in the contracts, and DP, or San Marcos has their own different staffing ratio because of their block scheduling, you'll find out that we can actually have, we could actually do a reduction of nine staff members, which would amount to a savings of $719,000. But when you lose the $480,000 in revenue, that's what the difference in the cost is. So, Mr. Zettel is looking at, I believe, removing or recommending that this program not be applied for. And there is no, there is nothing that we have to do except not apply for the program, increase the class sizes and not do that. I'd like to talk a little bit about the hourly programs. Hourly programs in general, these are the four hourly programs. You'll see that some are mandatory, some are not. And I've highlighted this one in red for a particular reason that I'll discuss at a later date. The hourly program funding rate has gone up to $3.9 per student hour. With the current compensation salary, we need a minimum of about 12 kids on average to break even. That break even point does not include any of the extras and frills like supplies, custodial hours, custodial supplies. This at-risk retention for the two to grades two to six, this is a mandatory, this is a voluntary program, and the program is capped, which means we can only have a certain number of hours on that. And on top of that, this program is deficit. It's the only program that still has a deficit, it's almost 23%, which means that that $3.9 per student hour is now down to $3 per hour. So it's, now raises the class sizes to 16. The state of California is currently throwing money at the KC senior class to get them to pass the KC. It would be nice, in your deliberations or talking with your senators or your fellow board members throughout the state, that the state changed this plan to an uncapped plan, make it mandatory, so that we can get the kids that are most impressionable at the time when they can learn to read at grade level the fastest. And that's why I put implications for the KC. If they have success at this level by the time they get to the KC, we shouldn't have trouble with them passing the test. So much for my editorial comments. Instructional material realignment, you can see the amounts to the, there's a slight increase to the districts for this, slight increase for the restricted lottery, which are all, these are all instructional materials, standard-based materials that they can be used for. The California High School exit exam, this is an application process. I think the applications due this month, or it's like keep your pulse on the, or keep your fingers on the pulse of Sacramento to find out when the application actually comes out, or you'll miss it. It adds up to about $500 per eligible student, and that would be about 10 hours of one-on-one instruction for each student at our current rates. This is an arts and music block. Again, these are the new ongoing programs. The state has actually given it a resource number so we can look at it now. These are the estimates and what they are, possible uses. On the August 8 meeting, I don't think it got into this packet, but there was a diagram of possible uses for these particular programs. New ongoing program, this is a program I don't expect the districts to see for the physical education teachers. These are going to be selected. Okay, 1,100 school in the state of California are going to get this funding. And just so that you know, in the K-8, in the K-8 school districts in this state, there's about 1,608 schools. And 1,100 are going to get these people, and they're going to be selected across the broad range of the school districts. That's about 15.9% of the eligible school districts are going to receive this particular grant. So I'm not going to necessarily expect any money from this particular program. The secondary school counselors are only for grades seven to 12. You can see the average compensation for one of our counselors in the current year on the current salary schedule, which equals approximately nine, nine and a half FTE. There are a number of strings attached to this program, including increased reporting data, reporting data on a quarterly basis, things that they have to do to tell what they've done with parents and with everything else during, for this particular program. English learner professional development, there's not a lot of information on this. The state hasn't assigned it a resource code yet. We presumably, we presume that it's going to be able to do additional subcosts in the classroom, but nobody really knows since the funding guidelines aren't out yet. Oral, oops, after-school, sorry. This is the after-school program, it's known as Proposition 49. There are a number of strings attached with this. This program was passed about five years ago. There's a current Senate bill out that's trying to change the requirements from what the voters voted for back in 2000. The good thing for the district is that we'll be able to use facilities as a matching if that Senate bill passes. The bad thing is that if it doesn't 50% match, it has to come from something other than facilities. So uses a lot of third parties on this. Oral health assessments are for grade, kindergarteners to help the school district notify parents about the requirements and services available. Again, not a lot of information about that. Paraprofessional training, same way. Incentive fundings for those people that want to become teachers. Oops, I'm sorry. The mentor program, we only have about four school districts, four school sites that have teachers that qualify for this particular program, because all of these requirements have to be. So the teacher had to have been working at a decile one to three school for at least five years, for the past five years. So I don't know how, and plus they have to commit to working for five years in this particular program. So it's a matter of whether we're going to get anybody involved with this or not. And this would be going probably mostly to the teacher as a stipend for their services as a mentor teacher. Now we're into the one-time block grants for this year. You can see here, this is for books and materials, and you have competing programs, so that will be a site-based program or a decision made by the site base on that. Career technical estimate, that's just for the secondary school district, K-7 to 12, and depends on whether or not the students are in ROP and what they're doing there. So there's requirements for that. This program here is, again, decile one to three for incentives to get people to work there. Whether or not, what the impact that is or what the regulations are going to be on that program, I don't know yet. This is the new, the other new one-time block grant that can be used for pupils, books, technology, or materials. Once again, another decision-making and fight among the school sites to figure out what they want to use the money for. The biggest moneymaker, I guess, for the district in one-time funding is a discretionary block grant. They've actually split the block grant, the block grant into district funds and state or site funds. At the district level, you can see the amounts of money. These are the possible uses for this particular block grant. The items in red are only for the district amount of money. So the district can use the money for these things. That's your discretion, or the discretion of the district to use that. Again, and this is based on the current year C-beds, which is not, the census is taken in October, the first week. We probably won't know the results of that until sometime, or the state won't know the results of that until sometime in November or December. So don't expect to see any of this money until sometime in February or March. This is the site block grant. You can see there's more money in this, $56 per student. Same type of uses. I guess the site council is going to make the decision on this. I guess they could put it toward deferred maintenance. I can't imagine why they would do that, but when there's other needs out there in the school sites. This particular block grant, the governing board has to approve the plan. So you have to see the plan for this money before any of the dollars can be spent. So no matter when the money actually comes in, it could come in tomorrow, if there's no plan, it doesn't get spent until there's a plan that you've approved. If you happen to disagree as the board with the plan that the school site council has come up with, the arbitrator in this particular issue would be the County Office of Education School Board, and they have time limits to when they can make that decision. The fact that, the fact that you have until May 1 to approve your plan, and they have until June 1 if there's a dispute between the plan, means that don't expect to see the money until 2007, 2008. The English learner instructional program, again, this doesn't have a lot of information. It is supposed to be books to supplement the standard materials. KC interventions of one time, again, not a whole lot of money, as you can see. And the school garden plan, $500 per eligible school site. So if you need a garden in your school site, they can apply for this when the application comes available and should be available. In closing, the, we have a number of problems in the elementary school district, declining enrollment, class sizes that are in contract that cost the district money. We have an aging staff, which means that they're on the end of the salary schedule, and so they're the higher-priced teachers for the most part. We do have some retirements for people who deserve, that want to do that and deserve that after years of service. Our feeder districts are also experiencing declining enrollment. So eventually, the declining enrollment issue is going to hit the secondary district. And so we can't just put blinders on and only look at the elementary school district for solutions for plans. I don't know that next year's outlook right now is sort of up in the air. I don't think it's as good a year next year, since the state's budget deficit, infrastructural problems are still going to exist. Next year, you can probably expect deficits to come back and not to be fully funded on a lot of different programs. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Would you please also comment on the spread of state money over one-time programs as opposed to ongoing funding?
Well, the state reckon, well, the governor in the, for a change, recognized the fact that of the structural budget gap that happens at the state level. So there's, the majority of the money that we receive this year is in one-time money. I mean, there's a significant amount of money that's one-time money. There's a significant amount of money that's going to be issued to us at later dates as part of closing the deal that you heard about. But right now, as far as I know, for that closing of the deal for two years ago when the governor made a deal with education to not take as much money, they're still trying to determine what that money's going to be used for when they actually give it to us. And so we may not have, it was unrestricted money that they removed from us, and it may be coming back to us as restricted. And so there's a, there's a significant amount of money that's one-time money that can't be, really shouldn't be used for salaries. You know, improvements in books and textbooks and things like that.
Mr. Wolf, is this, are all of these funds, is the application made through the CONAP?
No, mostly, well, I don't know that. I can't, the state hasn't come up with any rules for that. I would assume that in most cases, that's not going to be the case. These are going, these programs appear to be allocated straight out through the regular process that the state normally uses for state funding, where they look at either ADA or C-beds enrollments and issue funding based on that funding level.
So when, when those items that said C-beds, that means that's just going to be an automatic calculation by the state?
Well, I anticipate that, yes. I anticipate that, yes. But until the state actually comes up with guidelines, the state's been known to change their mind and change streams. They could add one of the, I doubt if they're going to add any of the one-time programs to the CONAP process. If they, if they add something, it's going to be one of the programs that's ongoing.
Now, will there be a point in time when one can look and say, and on that big board have a nice, on that screen, have a slide that you would put up and say, okay, here it is, here's what we have for the following end months?
Yeah, when the state, when the state gets to, when the state finally provides all of the, the problem, the problem with the state budget process is they come up with the money and they come up with the allocations, but there's, then the program people get involved at the state level to decide what the money can be used for. Because even though it's going to be used for PE equipment, what does that necessarily mean? And so once that process happens, we do get funding letters, and yes, we will be able to say this is exactly how much money we can, we are going to get.
Where I'm going is that in all my years on the board, I have not been there on that day, or when we have been presented with, here is the money that's coming from the state, maybe several days, maybe over a period of weeks. Here are the categories in which it is being given and the purposes. Now, Board of Education, policymakers, elected representatives of the public, how do you want to spend it? And that has never happened, and I just, I long for that.
We all do. That's because the state doesn't operate that way. In fact, the history of one-time programs like this is that the state will say, applications are now available. Do you want to apply for this program? Do you want to apply for that program? But they have rulemaking all the way along, and these programs will come to us sort of one at a time as the department gets.
Well, some of them are fairly regular. For example, I don't recall ever having a board meeting saying, this is what we expect in state lottery funds for the following year. What are the board's priorities for it's being used? And I would just, to me, budgetary rationality in a, you know, in a, in democratic governance requires coming to the representatives of the public with the best possible information about the available, available funds, about the contending uses for those funds, and then asking for a decision. And I just wish we had a budgetary process that would seize every opportunity to do that.
In most cases, in this particular district, we've tried to go to site-based funding, which means we make the sites, the funding available to the sites. The site council then comes up with a plan, and that comes, then their plan comes to the board, and hopefully that funding includes all of those things in there, and the board has an opportunity to look and hear the site's plan and how they're planning to spend their money. We watch, try to watch over to make sure that they're spending within the constraints and the guidelines that the state or the federal government puts forward to us. As these programs become finalized and the numbers become more accurate, I will be back either in a board brief or, you know, standing before you to let you know that the money's actually here and what the funding guidelines are.
Thank you. I look forward to that.
Thank you very much. Okay. I think we are now at the time identified for item E3, so we can move back to that item, Mr. Hetjunk. The public hearing on intent to convey easement to the city of Santa Barbara for accessible drop-off and sidewalk improvements on Robin Street at Harding Elementary School.
Thank you. The district has complied with all the requirements necessary in order to hold this hearing and... Basically, the easement that we want to give is for a handicap drop-off area on Robin Street. This is the playground, asphalt playground area up here at Harding Elementary School. If you're approaching Harding from the north on Robins, this is the sidewalk area. On this sidewalk area, we need to install a drop-off area here for handicap accessibility. In order to do that, the sidewalk needs to jog in here on district property, and so the city is asking that this jog-in where the sidewalk now relocates be conveyed to the city as an easement. If you look at my attachment E3, my last statement, the last paragraph says, following the hearing, the board may approve the conveyance. However, when I wrote the title, I included the, but I did not include the action to actually convey the easement. So we'll hold the hearing now, and I'd ask the board president to ask if there's any members of the public that wish to speak to it. And if not, I would bring this back to the board on the 29th as a consent agenda item for the conveyance of the easement, because I did not properly word the agenda to do so tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hetjunk. Do we have any public comment on this item? Mr. Hetjunk, have you received any letters or comments from any of the public regarding this matter?
No, I have not.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. We will add it to our consent agenda for our next meeting. Okay, that brings us, we've, we have taken care of item E4, we've taken care of item EF1. I see Ms. Renard in the audience now, so we can go ahead to item F2. A request to address the board by Carolyn Renard regarding problems with the student expulsion process. Ms. Renard?
As you know, the student expulsion process has been the topic of, on the board agenda for quite a few months now. Joan Esposito of the Dyslexia Awareness and Resource Center wanted to be able to be here tonight, but wasn't able to. Her office is overwhelmed with families seeking help with problems their kids are having with the schools, kids with disabilities. And she wanted you to know that she decided that it was basically a waste of time to come and speak to the board because you don't listen, with the exception of Bob Noel. The last time the board addressed the expulsion process was, I believe, June 12. It was an item on the agenda, and the board voted to adopt what was given as option 12 by Michael Gonzalez to the board. I sent in a, to the board, the district, a complaint because the board's action violated the Brown Act. The item was agendized as follow-up report, it was, this was on the conference agenda, as you know, follow-up report on board options when considering student expulsions. Instead of listening to a report, the board went ahead and voted to go with option two that was presented by Mr. Gonzalez. Now, that is a violation of the Brown Act. It doesn't, the agenda item doesn't say you're going to be voting. It's on the conference agenda. It says, follow-up report on board options when considering student expulsions. That doesn't notify the public that the board is going to be voting on anything, voting on adopting a certain option. So I received a letter back from the board's attorney, which was, would be laughed... So, I received a letter back from the board's attorney, which was, would be laughable if it wasn't so, this wasn't such a serious issue affecting children's lives to, for the board to allow its attorney to write back and try to make excuses like trying to say that the board didn't even really vote on anything, so it wasn't a violation of the Brown Act. I mean, that's really deplorable. You know, if, if you want, I'm assuming you know what your attorney is writing to people when they send in complaints about the board violating the Brown Act and, you know, I, I don't understand why this board doesn't really care about whether the public is notified of what the board's going to do or not. And they let their attorney write these ridiculous letters, trying to use legal jargon to keep the board from having to apparently have the public be aware of what they're doing. I, I don't really understand how you can let this happen. At any rate, option 2 had quite a few problems and the other problem was that Mr. Gonzalez didn't present the board with all the options when he wrote up the options for the board to vote on. And in particular, option 2 says that to continue the present practice with a modification and the modification basically was that you took away a bunch of the hearing rights that, that families and students presently have. The administrative panel, here is the case, the board reviews the findings of fact and recommendations submitted by the panel without permitting the student and/or his or her parents to make a presentation to the board. The board makes this decision in a public session. This doesn't permit the families or the students to make any presentations to the board and it's, as I wrote in my letter to the board complaining about the violation of the Brown Act, the board itself was considering quite a different option the last time it met. Several members of the board had, had wanted to be able to hear the, what families had to say, if they had further evidence to offer that hadn't been presented at the administrative hearing panel, if they felt that their due process rights had been violated and, and possible other reasons. And the board had expressed interest in that option and I thought at the time, that's what they were going to go with, but that wasn't even an option presented by Mr. Gonzalez at the June 12th meeting when you voted on accepting option 2. And I don't know what happened to that option, but I don't understand how it just got dropped and especially when there were several board members that were interested in that option. It seemed like the majority of the board. I, there's quite a few issues I'm trying to cover here, but regarding the expulsion process itself, regardless of, of the board's discussion of it, there is, there's grave problems with the expulsion process. There has been for quite some time, just as it is, even before you took away the rights of families to, to be able to appear before the board. And one is, as I've mentioned quite a few times and so has Joan Esposito, the children with disabilities, identified disabilities and unidentified disabilities such as ADD, learning disabilities and mental health problems in particular, and even those in special education that have been identified as having disabilities, they're being expelled without any inquiry being made into what might be underlying their behavioral or academic problems that are causing the expulsion. Now, that's a pretty big problem and, you know, without the board, and, and we've repeatedly brought that up to Mr. Sarvis, to the board, nothing has been done about it, nothing. Now, for the board to go on and take away the rights of families to come, be able to come to the board and present their own case, I, I really don't understand what you're trying to do or, well, the, the manifestation determination that students in special education and on section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, the, I've sat in on a few of those and, I mean, I literally, my jaw has dropped when I have seen what's gone on. The behavior that the expulsion is based on is found not to be related to the disability, even though this goes against all the facts. It goes against all the logic that's presented and the kid, it's clearly related to the In the manifestation determinations I've been in, this is what happened. So, this is what's going on before kids get to where they might be able to come before the board and their families. And the other thing, the expulsion hearings and the manifestation determinations, the parents aren't given the information they're supposed to have about why the student is being expelled and the acts and the incident that led up to the expulsion and the expulsion recommendation is based on. These parents aren't given that information. They're not given it orally and they're not giving it, given it in writing. They don't even know that they're supposed to be able to have it. So, you know, you have major problems going on in your expulsion process and it's much worse for, for kids whose parents speak Spanish. I mean, it's, they, they don't have a chance. So, the other thing is, the, if you go online and you look at the U.S. Department of Education and, and all the support, nonprofit support agencies that the, the U.S. Department of Education funds, now, they are just full of school-wide positive behavior programs that schools, they're full programs. They don't cost anything. They're ready for schools to use and adopt and all the studies, I mean, if you look at dropout prevention material, you can't find a single study that says that isn't the positive, the school-wide positive behavior programs aren't the way to stop expulsions and dropouts. I mean, everyone is saying it and I don't even hear the word "school-wide positive behavior program." I mean, if you want to do something about expulsions and about truancy, why don't you look at the federal, at the federal studies and all the federal information? Every nonprofit that deals with dropout and truancy is saying, the school-wide behavior programs, they're proven to have results. But, you know, why isn't someone writing grants, I mean, you can get those for free off the web, complete school-wide behavior programs are ready to go. But it would help if you guys could write some grants to get something going along those lines. You know, these, no one looks into why these kids are ending up in, in expulsion situation and instead, it's an authoritarian, top-down.
Thirty seconds.
Way outdated way of responding to problems in the schools. And the other thing is, there is, there was Mr. Gonzalez during, during the month-long discussion of this expulsion process, presented the idea of stipulated agreements where families could go ahead and if they didn't want to contest the expulsion, that they could just sign this agreement and they wouldn't have any due process rights anymore and they would just go along with whatever the district or the school wanted to do to expel them or move them to a different school. I addressed the board several months ago, three months ago, saying, you know, that was only the case if you adopted a certain, a certain policy.
Ms. Renard, your time has.
Contract on what the stipulated agreements were going to be and you haven't done that so far and I asked you not to allow that to go into place and I'd like a response from Mr. Sarvis tonight as to whether that is happening or not because it shouldn't be happening. The board has not authorized it.
Thank you, Ms. Renard.
I don't have a lengthy response, but I do believe there's confusion about option 2. The board cares very deeply about the Brown Act and about the public's right to know. It's my understanding that option 2 is entirely consistent with the written policy that has been in place for many years. It's not a change in written policy.
Without permitting the student to make, parents to make a presentation to the board?
Ms. Renard, I'm sorry. Ms. Renard, we can't have a dialogue at this point.
My impression was that if, if I requested it be on the agenda, it's the one time I can have a dialogue with the board.
You, you were allowed to have your 10-minute presentation and at this point.
That's not my understanding of how it works.
Well, I'll, I'll be happy to ask Mr. Gonzalez to contact Mrs. Renard to, to explain the written policy.
Mr. Sarvis, I would like your response as to whether the stipulated agreements are being used or not without permission from the board.
Ms. Renard, I will have to declare you out of order. This, this really isn't a dialogue.
Well, I asked Mr. Sarvis a question.
I'll be happy to talk to you at some other point.
I'd like the answer now, Mr. Sarvis.
I'll be happy to talk to you about our clear adherence to manifestation determination about our use of stipulated agreements.
Okay. I've seen them. I'm going to call this, this item to a close. We will move on to the next item. Thank you. The board will now, will, I think we will take our 15-minute break at this time. Sorry. We will take a 15-minute break and we will return to Mr. Zettel's item. The meeting of the school board back to order. We're returning from our break. We will now take three. I will not read all these policies again, third time.
This follows on the heels of three successive board presentations on wellness policy and wellness committee recommendations to the board. We've taken the, the CSBA polish, policies. We have inserted the things that, that we think we can tackle now and Mr. Zettel will be making that presentation to you.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, this is a time right now when I think we're on the cusp of a very historical moment as school boards across this country, because of the federal law, are passing the very same wellness policy, which is pretty exciting to me to have that come before us. And I, I do want to say thank you to the many community members, the many members of agencies and public health organizations that supported us this past year in giving input and advice into this program. And I especially want to thank Debbie Badger and Sue Dockenhouse for their support and help and for my tie. This is a wellness tie. Thank you. I'm going to be very succinct in this presentation. I'd like to just point out really a couple of things that I feel may give you pause or, or give us pause as we look at implementing this policy. I, when I put this together for you, or when we put this together for you, I try to, as Dr. Sarvis said, give you the things that we can do now. I've included in the appendix, the advice of all of the different committees that, that worked on the wellness policy. There are many more things in that advice and so I'd like to kind of save that appendix as we go through this year to refer back to. If we need to have some additions and update this policy, that's what we should be doing. We're also looking forward to having our committee continue as we implement this policy. So, without further ado, I'd like to go ahead and have you flip back to F3 and we'll kind of take a look at this together. The red items are items that are either changes or items that may cost or are items that may be of particular interest to you. And as I went through this, I picked out just a couple that I thought you would want me to talk about. And let's keep going way back here. I didn't really find anything in the nutrition side of it. I thought all of that was pretty clear. We're doing a lot of that already. We have an avant-garde group of folks that are working very hard in our schools. The thing that is going to be very different for our schools will come with the rewards, with the parties, with the, you know, cupcakes and the cookies and, you know, we're going to have to make a change in terms of our rewards for kids or parties that we have in our schools. And, and that is something that we want to have as we, you know, work at keeping kids very healthy.
Can we stop you to ask a question?
Jump right in.
On the first page, the number seven, providing an adequate time and embedded in school schedules.
Yes.
There are constraints, are there not, to lengthening lunch periods and so forth? Do, are, are we constrained in certain ways from doing that?
I think ed code provides that students need to have at least a 30-minute lunch. And so, we are constrained in lessening that. We need to provide an adequate time for lunch. Now, as we find our schools more crowded, at least at the secondary level and, you know, some of our changes in policy may have our ninth and 10th graders staying on campus, we have to have perhaps a little bit longer time to serve those children or have a more efficient lunch line or lines to serve those kids. We're not talking, we're talking about an adequate time for lunch and it certainly wouldn't be under 30 minutes. The one place that I wanted to talk to you, if we go back to the physical education piece, which is right towards the end. And go to the AR, that was one that I know will cause concern. It's AR 6142.7, under physical education. I don't have these pages numbered. I wish I did. You'll have to kind of thumb back through. And the, the part that's highlighted in red on that, 6142.7, under physical education administrative regulation, is student involvement in other activities involving physical activity shall not be substituted for meeting the physical education requirement. Now, I'm required to tell you that as part of ed code and as part of court opinions. We've talked about the fact that the only time that we can count a band course, for example, as PE is when the band director who is leading that class has a physical education credential and they cover the eight components that are listed on the other, on the next page. That's a very narrow court decision. And I would venture that across this state, you could count on the fingers of half a hand how many PE credential band directors there are teaching these eight components. And so, I have to caution you that giving credit for theater arts, for drill team, for band, giving PE credit is not legal according to the code and according to our Diane Wilson-Graham who came and was the lead on the PE for categorical program management. Now, how do we manage this? We've been doing this in this district for a long, long time. Many, many high schools are continuing to give credit for these activities. So, what do we do about it?
Well, or at least they were until their new wellness policy.
They, they were until the new wellness policy.
I understand they're all grappling with this problem, which is the ed code requirement.
So, we're faced with this and I'm, I'm wondering, I'd like to hear what your pleasure is, whether you'd like to convene a task force perhaps to look into this, to come up with some alternatives to this. I really don't have any answers for you right now.
I, I would like to, I'm totally confused. I thought we just passed an independent PE policy that, that dealt with all of this. Is that not true?
No, that's not true. This is granting exemption or granting actually a waiver or granting PE credit for courses that are not actually PE. We, we in this district give credit for band. We give credit for theater arts classes.
Band is, band is included in the education code, is it not? Marching band?
As PE?
As, as acceptable for PE credit?
No, no. The court decision again, Dr. Noel, was that it could be counted, students in a marching band could be counted, could be given PE credit if the marching band teacher had a PE credential and taught the eight components that are in the framework of PE in California now. Other than that, CDE says you may not do it.
I'm, I am perplexed because that, unless that's a decision since last January, that did not come up in the committee discussions or in the board discussion of, of independent PE where we did indeed recognize that marching band was. where we did indeed recognize that marching band was, in fact, people kept saying, "Look, you can get credit for marching band. Why can't you get credit for sailing?"
Yeah. That's when I, that's-
Is this a new case?
It's something that came up with our categorical program monitoring review. And the CDE lead was Diane Wilson Graham. I'm going to be meeting with her September 1st. And we'll discuss all of this. But this was something that she brought forward. She said, "You know you're out of compliance by granting PE credit for these things. That's not acceptable." And so I need to bring that forward to you. And we need to look for solutions to that.
So that was when they were here in July or June, was it?
Well, May.
May.
Yes.
Time goes fast.
I know. When you're having fun.
So that, and they're going to be monitoring now for compliance on that?
Yes. Well, there are several things that they're monitoring and I can bring that up maybe at a later date. And we're working on the waivers and the compliance issues there with PE. But this was one of them. So that was the issue that I was most concerned about.
Of course, it's a dead letter now, but that would also then have applied to ROTC.
It would have applied to ROTC, exactly.
Which also they received credit.
That's correct.
So I guess to follow up with that, this will be made, this will be, this information will be provided to students when they sign up this fall, especially freshmen and sophomores who might previously have thought they could take PE credit for these programs. We no longer will, well, we don't have ROTC, but we will no longer be allowing
Well, it-
band to get PE credit.
In my mind, I don't know if you as a board want to keep this in for this year, whether you want to give students time to make those arrangements. We're coming up on next Monday, starting school. Kids have classes right now and they were probably expecting to get PE credit. Now, we can delay this, but you have to know at some point this is going to be the case. So it is, you know, it's going to be your pleasure and we have to have a plan to put this into place. And there's a lot of political outfall here, especially with our elective teachers who, you know, they get kids in there and they get, you know, PE credit. If they didn't, if they had to take PE, that's one extra elective class that may cut out, you know, music, may cut out, you know, drill team or whatever it might be.
Is it all or nothing as far as the PE component to it? Does it have to be something on a day-to-day basis, the instructor has that background and the eight things are taught? Or could it be done sort of periodically throughout the semester?
It can't be periodically. We're faced right now actually with an issue at San Marcos High School because of their block schedule. The ed code is 400 minutes every 10 days for the school year. San Marcos has for, actually more than 400 minutes every 10 days, but only half the year. And so in band, it would have to be 400 minutes every 10 days for the whole school year that these components of PE were taught. That's the law.
Seems like that'll have a big change in our-
Big change, yes.
I have a concern that as Mr. Zettel-
Our students are going to be starting school next week and many of them have no doubt designed or chosen their schedule, planned their schedule, assuming that they were going to get PE credit for classes that they're enrolled in. However, and I'm totally sympathetic to that because I understand what that means to students and to the class and to their future plans, et cetera. But I'm also very concerned about knowingly awarding credit illegally. As, I mean, we've been told that this is not appropriate and not allowed under education code. And to continue to do it, knowing that, really concerns me. So I'm not sure how to resolve that. I assume we probably all share that concern. But I really don't want to go forward, doing, to continue to do this when we know that it's in violation of the ed code.
I really do would like to see a task force that maybe could look at some of these issues and look at some combination of PE and marching band or something and maybe be able to work that out. Maybe there are examples in the state and so forth that it certainly is worth an effort because there is, I think a lot of these programs are riding on that credit and-
I agree with that, Mrs. Malakoff. I think that we can come up with some ideas that may meet in the middle. I'm not, I don't have any of those ideas right now, but with greater minds than, you know, just this one, I think we can. We did that with independent PE. We were able to come up with some very good solutions.
Yeah. Maybe we need to have the first running band in the state of California.
Marathon band, yes.
Taught by a credential PE teacher.
Traitorlon band, I don't know.
I'd like to, I don't know whether to go down and speak from the pub, from there or not because my son is in marching band at San Marcos. And certainly if it comes to any kind of voting, I would like to recuse myself. But I just, based on what I know as a parent, I wondered if the fact that they go through the summer with a lot of exercises and in fact, every day this week from 8:30 in the morning until 8:30 at night, they're in band camp, which is a lot of minutes with a break for lunch and for dinner. And whether that, because that's not during the school year, that doesn't count, but that's a lot of conditioning. And the other question I'd like, I'd like to ask as a question because we have our esteemed general counsel with us and this seems to involve a legal question, is this something that you looked into, Mr. Price, or you could give us some advice on?
No, I haven't, but certainly I-
Mr. Zettel, you mentioned the eight areas that would have to be taught. And I'm looking at the second page of the AR.
And those are the eight areas.
They have the bullets next to them, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm a little confused. You're saying that these have to be taught in every PE class?
Yes.
So every PE class has to teach gymnastics?
Yes. A component of gymnastics.
And a component of aquatics.
And combatives.
I think it's worth-
And rhythm and dance.
And rhythm and dance.
I think it's worth the board's time and the public's time to review those eight areas if you'd like to just read through them.
Well, yes, the effects of physical activity on dynamic health, mechanics of body movement, aquatics, gymnastics and tumbling, individual and dual sports, rhythm and dance, team sports, and combatives.
This is what is now part of model curriculum framework in California for physical education.
So for example, if a student took a swimming class, as I did when I was in high school, and you studied swimming, but I certainly didn't study rhythm and dance in that class, that would no longer meet the requirements of a PE course?
In California, we require two years, the ninth grade year and then one more year at the 10th, 11th, or 12th grade level of required PE. Year one PE and year two PE have to have these eight components in their curriculum. Beyond that, we are also in the CPM, in the compliance, being asked to add at least three more elective PE courses, which could be swimming, which could be dance, which could be golf, into our curriculum. And we have 180 days to do that, to get that compliance completed. So we are going to be undergoing a fairly large review of PE right now. So we're asking our department, our district chair and the department chairs to meet, to discuss, and to relook at rewriting PE curriculum for ninth and 10th or 11th or 12th grade for year one and year two PE.
Okay. I also had a question about every student shall pass a swim test in order to graduate from high school.
That was my second piece I wanted to bring forward.
Is that required by the state or is that our own insertion?
That was, excuse, I'm sorry for talking over you.
Go ahead.
That was a recommendation, advice from the Wellness PE Committee. And that was one that I thought you might have a concern with. Some districts do this, especially districts that are near water or on the coast. As part of the regular PE, swimming is taught. Actually, I've seen and been around high schools where they have canoes in their pool and they tip them over and they show kids how to survive. So that's part of the water instruction. But at the very least, my personal feeling, I was a swim coach at one time. My personal feeling that is that every child that lives this close to water needs to be drown-proofed at the very least. They may not have to swim, you know, the freestyle stroke, but they should know how to stay afloat. But that's up to you. This is up to you. This is not any part of any compliance. This was a recommendation, so.
Is staying afloat the same as passing a swim test?
Would not be, no.
May I ask a question? If I understand what you're saying, then the ninth, ninth grade and 10th grade, they must take PE.
Ninth grade, they must take PE and then one more year-
And one more year, 10th, 11th, or 12th.
Yes, correct.
That was my understanding.
Yes.
Right now, ninth graders or 10th or 11th graders may take interscholastic football instead of PE. Is that correct?
We currently have an interscholastic period. That is sixth period. And those kids that are in interscholastic sports, excuse me, that is their PE class. And it continues for the rest of the year.
Don't go too fast for me here.
Okay.
That is their PE class.
Yes.
So they are taking that in lieu of PE.
Yes.
Then are they not required in that, whether it be golf, whether it be basketball, water polo, are they not then required to do rhythm and dance?
No.
And are we, are we not out of compliance in every one of those classes?
If, I didn't want to go here, but I'll go here with you. Independent PE also, in all of the various sports that we allow, does not include these eight things. And at some point-
Are all of those sixth-period athletics classes independent PE classes?
No, no.
Then my question stands.
Okay. I will go back to that then. No. It is not required to do this. The code allows interscholastic athletics to count for PE.
But we would still require them to, according to this, to know how to swim?
If that is your wish. You wish to write that into this policy.
I think it's a great idea. But is there some mechanism by which, how would they come out of soccer for a week or so to be tested, to be taught or whatever? Is there a way, a mechanism for doing that?
I don't have a mechanism in mind.
But there would have to be something that would get all those kids as well as the independent PE kids.
It would be possible to do that because those kids have sixth-period PE. We have PE teachers that could be certified, water instructors.
Oh, so our PE teachers currently cannot teach swimming?
Some can.
Some can and some cannot?
Some cannot.
Is that a problem?
Could be.
Well, we make sure we have enough certified so that we can cover that.
Right. They don't have to have the full WSI certification by Red Cross, but they do have to, if they're around water on a pool deck with students, they have to have a Red Cross certification of safety.
Ms. Harder?
Yeah. I think, I worked on the nutrition part of the policy. And if we wanted to approve the nutrition part of the policy tomorrow, we probably could. And I would say that we were probably in compliance. Would you agree, Ms. Badger? PE and health, PE in particular, presented a lot of logistical problems in implementing new policy. And I would suggest that we begin the school year and probably finish the '06, '07 school year out of compliance. I just don't see any other way to get through it. I would suggest that we attack this in pieces, that we put together a task force specifically for PE. I think that's probably the most difficult nut to crack. That we put together a task force to deal with the specific recommendations that are made and to actually put together steps that would be required to implement, for instance, a high school swimming test requirement. So that when that piece of the policy is brought back to the board, we would see what all of the logistical problems are associated with that piece of the policy. So I would recommend that we move piece by piece, but that we approve nutrition soon. I mean, we haven't gotten to the health discussion yet. That we implement a task force for PE tonight to, you know, quickly marshal our forces around PE and then move on to health.
I would certainly endorse what Mrs. Harder is suggesting. And I would add that I think it would be very helpful to us as board members, perhaps also to administrators and to site administrators, and certainly to the public, to have, to ask General Counsel, Mr. Price, to prepare a legal analysis because on numerous occasions, you've mentioned the code, and on a couple of occasions, court cases. And at least in my reading of both the code and an occasional court case, they are not always what they may seem. And that's why we depend on expertise. And I think that would give us some foundational information as we proceed to try to sort this out.
I think that's a wonderful idea. I'm very glad to go to Mr. Price to do that.
Well, it certainly seems like dealing with wellness or the nutrition part first or separately is a good idea because that seems to have very little controversy surrounding it as opposed to our PE and perhaps our health. Just before we leave this item to maybe move on to the health part, or I don't know if we're ready to move on, I had a couple of other questions regarding this particular one. First of all, I have some concerns about requiring students to pass a swim test in order to graduate from high school. Given that we have just been dealing with the effects of having to pass the Casey exam in order to graduate from high school and we have so much time devoted to our students, we have extra class sessions for our students, I can't, I would not in good conscience want to try to advocate taking instructional time in content areas away from the school day in order for students to have an extra period of swimming so that they could pass a swim test before they graduate from high school. And I also would not in good conscience want to deny a diploma to a student who had achieved all the requisite coursework and grades simply because the student couldn't swim. I love swimming. It's my favorite sport. And I think kids should learn to swim. But I have some real problems with requiring that for high school graduation in light of additional requirements that we already have for students. The other, but the other question that I had was regarding the item that says, "Teachers and other school and community personnel will not use physical activity, e.g. running laps, push-ups, or withhold opportunities for physical activity, for example, recess, physical education, as punishment." And I'm wondering, in terms of sort of athletic teams, which have a long tradition of having, of using running laps as a mechanism for encouraging students to behave appropriately, and because typically the running laps also kind of ties in with what the coach is trying to accomplish, I'm wondering if that would also apply to coaches?
I think we could ask Mr. Price to weigh in on that one. If we indeed have interscholastic athletics as a sixth-period PE and ed code 49001 precludes coaches in PE from using physical activity as punishment, does that then mean that the football coach can't have the kids do push-ups for every point they lost by? I don't know that. So, good questions. So if I, if I can take this as direction, I would be glad to strike out, every student shall pass a swim test. I would be glad to strike out for the second reading, student involvement in other activities. And we can then form a task force and work on this. and we can then form a task force and work on this for this year. Is that what your will is?
I have a question. My question is, are there any consequences to us as a district by not having all three pieces of the policy in place for the '06, '07 school year?
There's some latitude on the part of the state. Districts all over the state were to have this all in place by July 1st. Very few of them did.
Can I ask, I support the direction that we're going with all of this, and I think it does require a lot more discussion. A question about the discussion we had, I think maybe the last time we talked about this, was to create additional options for PE that sort of feed into lifestyle choices that people might make, you know, triathlons, or kayaking, or other things. Will that be part of the discussion, is creating some additional electives?
I believe it will be. I'm currently working with Santa Barbara High School, and Mr. Craig Moropoulos, to bring in the California PE Teacher of the Year from Poway High. And she is the lady who created this wonderful triathlon for all students at her high school, and a whole new PE curriculum that was awarded, the KAFER, which is the PE, California PE Teachers Organization, the highest award, which they don't do very often. So I'm very anxious to look at that new curriculum with them, and we'll kind of, you know, we can use that information with the task force to see if that's the direction we'd like to go.
Great, thank you.
I have images of widespread civil disobedience in this area. This is going to, there will be a political backlash, and my guess is that the CDE may very well want to reconsider this about six, eight months from now, when they hear back from boards that have been struggling with it, and who are hearing from constituents who are madder than the dickens about some of the implications of it that seem to be there, as I look at it. My goodness.
Yeah, I hesitate to bring this to you, but I feel it's my job to do that so that you hear, you know, what the legal piece is, so. And I'm glad to have Craig weigh in, or Mr. Price weigh in.
Did I hear your suggestion was either to take out these pieces that are somewhat controversial and deal with them separately, or we can just delay the whole thing? Is that our choice?
I guess that's my question to you. Should I just strike those pieces out and give you the rest of it to pass, and we can put those pieces in at a later time? That's entirely possible.
I like Mrs. Harder's suggestion better.
To leave them out. Okay. Very good.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that one.
Is that what your suggestion was?
No, my original suggestion was to delay passing this portion, the entire.
The entire portion.
Policy until it can be dealt with through a task force.
Thank you for that clarification.
Just on the PE section? Okay, not including the health section, okay.
As far as the health section goes, I didn't really find much controversy there. We are trying to move towards having health for every 9th grader at least a semester, which is the graduation requirement, and health for every 7th grader. We'd like to have it be a semester, but many of our, several of our junior highs have it as a trimester now, as they have an elective and a wheel. And we'd like to try to move to longer instruction in health for 7th grade. The other piece, and I've been dealing with this actually over the last several days, is that our current ARs in health education allow for the complete exemption from the entire course by a student based on religious or moral differences with the health course. I've asked Michael Blatcher to weigh in on this one, and the current Ed Code only, and current court cases, and he cited two of them for me, and I can get that for you so that you can see it. Parents may opt out of only portions of the health class, and that's been upheld twice, one in the Supreme, in the Superior Court, and one in the Court of California, that they can say that because of religious objections, they wish to opt out of the sex ed portion, perhaps. They cannot opt out of the entire course. And my feeling is that that's the correct way to go. But our current AR is different, so.
And I would agree, I mean, I would agree with it. Obviously, we need to comply with the law. The difficulty with 9th grade health has always been the practical problem of the one semester course not being balanced with something on the other side, and also offering it either zero period or sixth or seventh period. I mean, San Marcos has conquered the problem, but the block schedule allows more options over the course of four years. So it's really a practical problem of, you know, how to deal with attracting students to the class who normally would try to exempt themselves on the basis that they don't want to give up an entire period for an entire year to accommodate that one semester class.
Yes. Now, when we call it a 9th grade class, actually, that's a misnomer, because our graduation requirement is one semester in grades nine through 12. So they do have the opportunity to find a course to back that with at some point.
You know what? It's kind of, it's glib to say that. It needs to be presented as a package and a schedule. Health one semester, and course X the second semester, because kids don't do it. I mean, it's, I know it's a problem that is epidemic at DP in particular, and we've just got to find a solution.
Is it offered in the summertime?
We have done that.
It's a half of the summer school session?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if there's ways to sort of make it even more amenable, even a shorter period or something.
Is there a dual enrollment class at City College that would satisfy the requirement?
Yeah. In '99, when this AR was passed, parents could opt out of the entire course. Ed Code has changed since then, and the law, and the court decisions have upheld that change in Ed Code, so that only part of that course. And so really, your graduation requirement of five units of a semester is the requirement, and we have to find a way to do that. So I really found nothing more that was controversial in that section. Unless you did. You might have.
Okay, I believe we have two members of the public who wish to speak to this item. You can take public input now.
Me too. Susan Horn, followed by Carolyn Renard.
Hi, I'm Susan Horn, and, can you hear me? And I worked on the Wellness Task Force this past year in the Health Ed Section, but I would like to just briefly tell you something about the PA section or the PE section, and that is that I noticed that in that section, there's a part that says that the only people that can teach PE are credentialed PE teachers. And I wasn't sure if that applied to elementary as well as secondary or not, but I did want to tell you about an option that for elementary in particular, but also for middle and high school, there is an option called SPARC, which is, was developed in research at UC San Diego, and has been in use for at least 10 years by different schools. And I just wanted to note that, and just in the last couple days, I talked to a person at the Lompoc School District that has trained, they're training all their teachers in SPARC, and it's especially, they've started with their elementary teachers, and the, you can train 40 people at a time, and it's, I've done little sections of this training at conferences, and it's just an incredible, wonderful, fun, plus it's got the theory behind it of, you know, building and, you know, warm-up and activity and cooldown and all of that incorporated in to the lessons or to the play. And so I just wanted to let you know that there are options for training the elementary teachers, if that is something that you'd be willing to follow up on. And there are a couple people here that were instrumental, the superintendent and the Director of Curriculum at Lompoc that I've mentioned here, that would be happy to talk to you about it, if that's an interesting option. So just wanted to let you know that you don't, these are not credentialed teachers that are teaching SPARC, but it's a marvelous way to incorporate. And one of the people that I talked to about it said, "The teachers come out of the training just with amazing evaluations." The summer, they trained 40 teachers twice, so they have 80 teachers now trained. And they came out with a curriculum of 400 pages of activities that the teachers can do with the kids.
30 seconds.
So, anyway.
Thank you very much, Ms. Horn.
Carolyn Renard.
It's very clear that a lot of work has gone into developing these policies, and I wanted to add something, that as a former mental health nurse, I notice in here that there's not much of an emphasis on mental health, and it's really not mentioned anywhere except in one small place, and it's extremely important, as I'm sure you know. And I think it's worth having a policy of its own in here on how the district supports students' mental health, and how mental health will be supported in the schools, and how it will be put out as a goal, and something that's important in the policies. And something that Ms. Cordero mentioned about, I'm not sure if it's, this is exactly what she was talking about, but about the administrators or teachers not keeping students in as a punishment, using extra laps as a punishment. And I know that, at least at Santa Barbara High School, despite complaints that it's against the California Education Code, that lunch detention has been happening, and I think that it's, that it would also be worthwhile to have a policy that students won't be held in from, you know, speaking of destroying someone's mental health, if you don't let them have their breaks because they've had problem behavior, their behavior is just going to get worse. I mean, it's just, it's not constructive, so, you know, a policy, a district policy that that won't be used as a punishment. Let's see. The other thing is, if the board decides not to have a swim, the necessity of passing a swim test for a graduation requirement, I would hope that they would make part of their policy being educating the students on how important it is to know how to swim, so not just drop the whole subject altogether, but if you're going to get rid of that requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Renard.
I have a follow-up question on the issue of mental health being covered in the health policy. I didn't see much in there in writing, but I have seen the 9th grade text on health, and there's a significant amount of information on mental health in that text. So I think, you know, maybe we mention it somewhere, including mental health, as, so that it's explicitly mentioned, but the text itself, which I found very, actually very interesting, had a lot of elements in there. So we should acknowledge that.
Yes, I'd be glad to include the units that are taught in health for you, so that, you know, like we went over in PE, we could certainly do that with the health education part. And you're exactly right, mental health is a big piece of this.
I think that concludes, oh, I'm sorry.
No, just a quick question. Do we want to try and put together the bare bones of the task force tonight? Or do we want to?
Is there a board member who would be interested in serving on that task force?
Mrs. Rodriguez just volunteered.
I think she did.
Very good.
I'd be happy to, but if there's another board member that's very interested, we defer to you. Okay?
We'll ask Mr. Zettel to formulate the committee and schedule meetings.
Better move quickly, because December is quickly approaching.
Got it. We'll have all this resolved by then.
Quick, like a budding rabbit, here we go.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to item F5, Discussion of Safety on School Campuses. And this will, I think, is Mr. Zettel's presentation again.
Well, let me introduce this. This is an item that was suggested by board members. We have constant concerns about kids who bring knives to school, airsoft guns, just various things, and how those students are notified, the notification of consequences. I know there are a lot of things that we notify students about over the summer as part of the annual notification and parent rights. And of course, since there are so many things that we take to parents and students over each summer, some of those things don't get emphasized. So we asked for a discussion about how this does get emphasized, how the information does get relayed to students, because we do want students to be safe on campus. We want them to know the consequences of just happening to pick up a knife and bring it along, or to carry a knife in their backpack as possible self-defense. I mean, there are dire consequences for behaviors like that. Mr. Zettel?
Thank you, Dr. Sarver. So I've asked our principals to be here, and the ones that were able to, I'm very glad to see, to explain in what ways they communicate these issues to students. Now, as Mr. Turnbull has told me, that ever since my hair was brown, we've had students understanding that knives and guns could not come to school. So it's been a long time standing. I mean, a long time, so. But I know that you're interested in how we continually communicate that, to make it a real point with students, especially students who come to school afraid, perhaps, and who carry their own weaponry to protect themselves, which I know happens. And how do we communicate that they just cannot do that? So I've asked the principals to be here, and perhaps we could start with our senior high school principal here, Mr. Morgan. Would you like to talk about what happens at San Marcos High School to communicate?
Senior. Senior. Blonde hair. He's a 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 blonde hair. These comments about seniority and age, Mr. Turnbull, will be reciprocated soon.
Blonde hair. Go Royals before I start. I brought along our packet that we've just recently had our kids pick up at Royal Return in English and Spanish, in the packet that was handed out. We also have the kids at San Marcos bring back a sign-in sheet, parents indicating English and Spanish, that they've read this and are familiar with it. In addition to that, as we go through our progressive discipline, assistant principals counsel the kids on an ongoing basis as the steps of discipline go through, we also have an assembly. We've just gone to that. Last year, we had our first assembly, the first four or five days of school, where we have grade-level assemblies. We've created a PowerPoint presentation and review everything, just to cover stuff that may have been overlooked, go through the sign-in process that has to be turned in before the kids get their schedules. So we've got several layers in place to make sure our kids are aware of what's going on and what the requirements are. And again, it's an ongoing situation with our assistant principals as we deal with discipline issues, plus at the beginning of school, two different separate processes to make sure the kids are clear on what is expected and what's acceptable. So I think maybe that answers the situation from the elder statesman of the group.
I hesitated to call the real senior statesman because of her gender, but she is actually the senior principal here. Ms. Abney, would you like to come on up? Tell us what you do at LaCuesta.
I'm not only older than he is, but I've also been serving longer. At LaCuesta, we, the counselor meets with every family as they do the intake, and has that conversation with them as we do the packets. We also, it's in our handbook, and we've always Um, we also, um, it's in our handbook, and, um, we've always, in past years, um, the first or second week of school, the counselor, the assistant principal, and I go out and meet with, make presentations on all the campuses. This year, we're gonna go out and start on the first day of school, and each of us is gonna be on a different campus, and each of us is gonna start making the presentations on the first day of school. So, um, Mitch is gonna be on a campus and start making those presentations, and I will be on campus, and Bonnie will be on a campus, and we'll all be on different campuses every day that first week, and we're all gonna be making the presentations. We're gonna be going over the handbook, telling them what each of our roles is, but also talking about school safety and the things you can and can't do on campuses. And so, that will be one of the things that we'll be emphasizing, and each of us, they'll be hearing that message three times that first week, every single campus. So, we'll be on, uh, four continuation campuses and community day school that first week. So, they'll be hearing that three times that first week of school. And then we try to hit it, you know, a couple of times each semester, um, as we do get kids open entry, open exit. Um, we don't have all the same kids, um, all semester long. So, we, um, we tend to do it probably more, more often than they do on the traditional campuses, just simply because we do get kids, um, kinda trickling in over the course of the semester. Okay? And our handbooks are in English and Spanish also. Um, and our, our campuses, rather than doing, um, open houses or back-to-school nights, um, each of our continuation campuses and community day school, um, the teachers have parent-student conferences, um, one-on-one, seven, seven-thirty in the morning, one, one-thirty, two, two-thirty in the afternoons, and they meet with every family, so they establish a relationship with the families. So, they'll be having those conversations, as well as what if, you know, what units are the student deficient, what have they earned, what do they need to do to get caught up, those types of things. So, um, that'll be happening, beginning with the second week of school also.
Can I ask a question of all of you, basically, but if you wanna address it too?
All of me, certainly.
Regarding two things, 'cause we're talking about weapons primarily, but there's also fighting that doesn't include weapons, and then there's certainly, safety includes drug use and-
Sure.
-other things. Um, so, I guess my first question is to all of you, maybe the, the other two that come up, uh, would, do you cover all of those things comprehensively together, or do you handle drug use as a separate discussion? And then that, my second question has to do with how students with disabilities are counseled and advised, and do they get additional information that they might need to fully understand, um, for those kids that need extra help understanding?
Um, probably we, when you say, "Do we cover them all," you know, kind of all together, um, it's, it's the same conversation, um, at least when we go, when I go out to the LaCuesta campuses, um, you know, it's, these are all the things that you shouldn't do, you know, and then, and then you break it out to the, "You don't fight, you don't bring drugs to campus, you don't come under the influence, you don't bring weapons." And, but we discuss, these are the zero tolerance items, you know, these are the things that, you know, is, you know, obviously, a gun is a zero tolerance item, um, a knife that has a, you know, blade that's a certain length is a zero tolerance item versus a knife that has a shorter blade, you know? So, you kinda break it down that way, particularly for our kids. So, yes, it's all the same discussion, but, but, you know, I break it down based on, um, so, so I would, yeah, I would, I would definitely let them know, um, the differences and the, the consequences, the differences and the kinds of, um, issues that we're talking about. Um, as far as special needs students, um, I tend to have, um, resource students only, and so, um, most of my students, um, the, the disability is not severe enough that, you know, that, that there would be a need for, um, very specific, um, extra counseling. Um, but if, if there were questions that couldn't be answered in a, in a general discussion, then, you know, then we would sit with them one-on-one and, and, you know, make sure that they understood it, um, you know, quietly and, and, uh, in, in a more, you know, um, one-on-one type setting. So, that would be on, on my campuses, and that, that certainly would be very different from the, from the bigger schools. So, okay.
I, I'm sorry, Ms. Abney. I also have a question, and this is a question that, um, maybe the other principals can also address. Um, I'm wondering, because cases that we see, we see them when they've gotten to this level of expulsion, it seems to me that most of the students were aware that having a, a weapon on campus was against the rules. And in fact, most of them also were aware that it was an expellable offense, and yet they did it anyways. Um, so, I'm, I guess I'm interested in, in what do schools do, what do the, the principals or the APs do, to provide students with an under, or, or a sense of the alternatives for them? Because it seems to me that telling them it's against the rules and telling them what the consequences are, um, may not be enough, because the students we see knew that, and they, they still chose to do it. Um, do, do the, do the schools work with the students to identify if, you know, if you are in fear, if you think somebody's gonna beat you up, if you've been threatened? Here are some other alternatives to bringing a weapon to campus?
I know there's a lot of, a lot of that that goes on. I mean, students that are willing to come forward and express that, that, that there is fear involved, I, I think the, the bigger issue for those kids that bring weapons because they are fearful, they are also not the ones that are willing to come forward and express to anybody in, in, in an adult role, or anybody in an authority role, that, that they are fearful. I think that that's, that's probably where the breakdown is. Kids that are willing to come forward or have, have, you know, the, whatever the inner ability is to come forward and say, "I am fearful," absolutely, there's counseling available. We have outside resources, we have resources within our schools to counsel them, to offer them, you know, alternatives to. Um, in my case, I can move them to a different campus if there's, you know, safety issues. There's, there's lots of different resources that I have if I know that a kid is not feeling safe, or if there are those kinds of issues going on. Um, I think where the breakdown is, is where the, where we don't know that the kid's not feeling safe, and that he's bringing the weapon because there are safety issues, where the student is being bullied, where, where, you know, the, that we don't know that that's happening. Um, I recall vividly, um, working at La Colina Junior High and having kids being bullied and doing a lot of interventions and a lot of counseling of students who were being bullied. Um, I think that it's just, if you know what's going on, it's much easier to deal with it and to try to work and find interventions than it is if you don't know what's going on. And I think that those are the kids, they do know that there's consequences, and they do know that if they get caught, that expulsion is, is a very possibility. But they also aren't, you know, they're not at a place in their lives where they can come forward and, and share that with somebody. So, I think what we have to do is we have to make those people available, and those are the people I try to bring into my classrooms. I try to make sure that I have counselors available, I try to make sure that I have people, um, you know, in those roles, that, that students feel safe to come forward to. Um, there, there needs to be somebody on every campus that every student can connect with. So, I think that's, that's what we're looking for. And obviously, we're not there yet, when we've still got kids coming, coming to school with weapons, 'cause they don't feel safe. But I think that's where the breakdown is. So.
Okay, we'll let you off the hot seat now.
I'd like to invite Mr. Turnbull to come up next. Mr. Turnbull, as he's walking up here, has been, uh, in a, in a dialogue with Cam Sanchez. And I really welcome that dialogue, and I also really welcome a dialogue with the other part of the puzzle, and that's probation. Uh, it's been my experience in the past that that kind of, uh, support on our campuses, either with youth and the law courses taught by these folks, or, uh, just their support in what they're doing, uh, and, and general communication really helps. So, Paul, can you explain not only what you do to inform students, but the new dialogue that you have?
Uh, well, Santa Barbara High School does almost exactly the same thing as San Marcos High School, we just do it a slightly different way. I was gonna say better, but that would've been inappropriate. So, I'll go with, with different. Um, we do exactly the same thing. We have, we have the packets that go out, they come in, it's a, it's a positive recognition, you have a sheet that comes in, parents sign off. We were actually short a couple of discipline guides, and our kids came to us with this sheet that they would not sign until they got it, 'cause they thought that there were gonna be some things falling out of the ceiling or something, getting them. So, we know that they do read them, which was actually quite a relief for us. Um, we also have grade assemblies, we began that last year, we have, um, documents in English and Spanish for families. Uh, you had mentioned the question about, uh, special needs students. I know that if it isn't in a formal IEP or 504 meeting, there are also individuals who meet with, uh, counselors. We have our youth service specialists, the psychologists on campus are very, very apt at making sure that those students have those, uh, messages very clearly understood, whether it's a formal meeting or not. And they happen frequently throughout the year. As far as the police department is concerned, this year, we have the gang task force on our campus for the first two weeks. They work nights during the, uh, the regular year, but for the first two weeks of school, they'll be working days for us. And it's great. Cam Sanchez has been fantastic, uh, he suggested the idea, and we're very happy to have it. And the guys on the gang task force know exactly who it is that we're talking about, and they know exactly whose family members live in, in the immediate community, and they're gonna be on our campus in uniform, simply as part of, of presence and helping our students get to school and get to class on time. I see Mrs. Harder is anxiously waiting.
Yeah. No, actually, you, you probably raised the issue that, that, I don't wanna say that I'm most interested in right now, 'cause that's not true. I mean, I'm interested in a lot of things. But, uh, the issue of weapons seems to me, and I'm speaking anecdotally, based on a hundred and five expulsions that we, we've done so far this year, which is a record, as far as I know, record that, you know, I'm not proud of, that weapons seems to me more of a junior high issue, you know, knives, um, that sort of thing. Fighting and gang-related problems seem to be more focused on our high school campuses. And I really appreciate the effort that the Santa Barbara Police Department, uh, has put into working with Santa Barbara High. But half of our secondary schools are not even located in the city of Santa Barbara. I know that the county sheriff and, uh, the city of Santa Barbara are devoting school resource officers from seven AM to four PM on regular school days, but I'm wondering, have we engaged with the sheriff about what's going on, on our other high school campuses? Um, like I said, I really appreciate, you know, Mr. Turnbull working with Santa Barbara Police Department. Maybe we need to be asking, uh, the sheriff to be working with us on the other two, uh, high school campuses.
We have community officers on the other campuses as well, and, and those principals can address it. I don't know if Mr. Swanitz wants to address these issues just yet.
I'd be happy to talk about it.
Well, I can tell you, when I was in Galida, uh, a short time ago, I was speaking with the sheriff's office, and, uh, Jul- Julie McCammon, Julie, I can't remember her last name, forgive me, uh, was the chief, the new Galida Police Chief, which is essentially an annex portion of the sheriff's department. And she was very happy to do that. And I know that if the question was raised, that they would be pleased to do that. It's not, from their perspective, it isn't, um, something that they're interested in, in retaining a reactive role. They're happy to get on campus, and at the junior high and the elementary level, they hand out more stickers than you could ever imagine, the stickers then end up on places they probably shouldn't on campus. But, you know, it's exciting for a shorter period of time, but presence means everything. Our teachers understand that adult presence means everything, and the, the officers do as well. It's not, it's not a, a roadblock by any means.
Can you, I, I guess I would benefit from your fleshing out what the gang task force does at your campus.
This year-
This is a part of the police department.
Correct.
And you say, "They know," they know, and, this is individual. They know who the individuals are who are in gangs, did you say, or?
There are, because of their work in the community, there are siblings and relatives and cousins and uncles all the way through the community who are either affiliated with gang members or, uh, not, not even loosely affiliated, but just simply friends and acquaintances of. And because of their work in the community, by having them on our campus for the first couple of weeks of school, it sets a tone with anybody who may be related. And because Santa Barbara High School is in the middle of the east side, and because we have many entrances and exits, uh, right now, for us, it's important. We have non-students who approach our campus often. And right now, with construction, there are a lot of extra ways to get on and off the campus. And for us, I, I don't consider it a necessity, but I, I consider it something incredibly important for setting the tone for the remainder of the year.
So, what happens when they, I mean, they only stay a few days, I presume? What happens then?
The gang task force?
Yes.
Well, during that short time, we've, essentially, what we have are, are people standing right beside each other on the, on the campus, were able to talk directly with the police, and the lines of communication are more open than they ever have been. And it's, it's very difficult to get ahold of somebody who only works at night.
Okay, so, they're there for a week, right? Is that what you said?
Uh, two weeks, yes.
Two weeks, okay. After that, who's there?
The regular personnel. This is just a-
You mean, your, your, your security people?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
This is simply a favor and goodwill from the police department.
I see. And you say it sets a tone that then carries on in the absence of the policeman?
I believe it will, yes.
I see.
It will also because of the communication that we will have had, and the school personnel who remain on campus will have an idea of individuals we may not have been aware of before, and that will help us monitor.
Okay. I, I have a, a more gen- general question. Uh, I've just recently read a little bit about bullying, anti-bullying policies, uh, in our schools, and, uh, and, uh, read a couple little research articles about what works and what doesn't work, and I, it doesn't ring any bells of, uh, of, in my recollection, that we've had that kind of, of discussion here. Am I, can you fill me in on that? Do we have anti-bullying policy?
There's a zero tolerance policy on bullying. That's-
Yeah.
Along the lines of the same discussion we have with weapons and a variety of other things.
Ms. Waskey, did you wanna comment on that too? I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
Dr. Sarver.
Um, specifically, last year, at the beginning of the school year, Monroe School went ahead and had, um, in fact, we all signed an anti-bully, maybe, maybe you weren't present at that board meeting, Dr. Noel, but the school has that, there, many of the schools have anti-bullying policies, but Monroe in particular brought it to the school board and shared, um, the speaker they had that worked with the kids and staff and the parents. And, um, this person has also been in some of the other schools and working with staff and parents and kids. And, um, each classroom has an anti-bullying sl-, um, pledge that they, the kids have signed, and there's one in the office at Monroe School. That's just an example of, at the elementary level, what we've done.
Well, we have a considerable number of programs throughout the district. In fact, we started last year with a full day in-service with our teachers, uh, one for elementary, one day for secondary, and that was one of the major topics of that in-service.
Do, do we, uh, the research I was reading made a very clear distinction between a prevention approach and a, uh, zero tolerance, uh, after-the-fact punishment approach. I, I'm, I'm hoping and guessing that we have the prevention approach, because that was the, the evidence suggests that was the more effective.
We think we have to be fully ahead of it.
Yeah.
And it's also part of our whole tolerance campaign, all of our ADL work, World of Difference trainings that our new teachers go through, our summer workshops with teachers through, uh, NCCJ, uh, they all focus on that.
But what was the eye-opener for me, 'cause I had never delved into this area before, was that, that in some of the, uh, really awful cases, Columbine being one, Santee and, uh, being another, uh, presume, apparently, the, the violence was a reaction to previous bullying. And, uh, so I just thought, my God, you know, uh, we've, we've, I hope we have something in place, I'm very, I'm assured, reassured. Thank you.
Well, it's the kind of thing you have to have activities, uh, toward at all times, and then every once in a while, you are amazed to discover that it hasn't gotten through and, and you've got a case of bullying on your campus, and, uh, it's very upsetting.
May I add one more thing?
It's a very important issue.
Um, on Thursday, our child development staff is all, I think for the first time, child development is having a special, um, uh, professional development all day from the ADL, and it's focused on, excuse me, with young kids, you know, our youngest kids in our system, and, um, bullying and how it starts, and also, there's a separate section for parents that evening, so that parents can also understand how to start talking to their three- and four-year-olds about, you know, bullying and, and all that goes along with that. So, we're starting young.
I, I guess I would just go a little step farther, uh, because I, I had heard from a constituent about a problem, and, uh, which seemed to suggest that PE and junior high school- about a problem, and which seemed to suggest that PE and junior high school was a venue for this. Are we tuned into that and on top of it at that level?
I'm not aware of a general problem with junior high PE, but if there is a problem and we ever hear of it, then we step in and step in hard on it.
Mr. Turnbull is-
Mr. Zettel nodded affirmatively when I said that.
Mr. Turnbull is nodding as well.
It's, I think, a lot of what happens with issues in the locker room in junior high school relate a little more to the anxiety of the age. It's a funky period of life. And from my small amount of experience in junior high as an administrator, it got to be one of the points when I would walk parents around our campus. I would purposely have them, when the locker room was empty, walk through the locker room. And then, when their students came with them, we would, I would walk through the locker room with their, their children, because I wanted them to understand that it wasn't as scary a place as they had thought. And once we dispelled the unknown, it turned out that it really wasn't quite the issue that people had labeled it. So it isn't as bad as it's being portrayed. And I do know that the junior highs do, and the high schools do a great job of making sure that there are supervisors always there.
I wanted to echo that also. Our PE teachers are constantly on patrol, basically. They have to be in the locker rooms when students are in there dressing and undressing. We know it's where the towel snapping starts and all of the comments and all of the bullying, really, that, and it is the angst of the age, you know, that goes on. It's their first experience in a locker room. And our PE teachers are well aware of that.
Just a request to Dr. Sarvis and Mr. Zettel, that we make inquiries with the county sheriff's department and with the city of Galida to see if we can engage them in a similar process as what is going on between the Santa Barbara Police Department and Santa Barbara High School.
Good. Thank you.
And in that regard, just a, not specifically to you, Mr. Turnbull, but just a general caveat. Well, I think that our relationships with the police department and the county sheriff's department can only be beneficial to our, our schools. I do want to be, hope that we remember not to profile our students or stereotype students in any way based on previous interactions or information that, that the law enforcement agencies may provide, that we are continuing to give our students the benefit of the doubt as much as we can, and treat them all appropriately. And I'm sure that we do that. I'm not, don't mean to suggest that we aren't just a reminder as we go forward with pursuing those, those relationships.
I'd have one, one last question. Do you, and this is to all, all of you, particularly high school principals, do you have adequate resources for campus security, or do you need more?
Are you asking us if we would perhaps enjoy more people, more funding, more, Dr. Noel, I'm getting tingly.
I, I think, I think the, I'd like to know, but I'm asking on behalf of the public also.
Absolutely. At the risk of, at the risk of speaking for my colleagues, I don't think that I am completely out of place by saying, yes, we can have certainly more support and would welcome more support, as far as school personnel and, and security personnel are concerned.
And you would expect it would pay off in some, in some way?
I think, as I mentioned before, that getting out of the reactive model is important. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily limit what you can do to school security. I don't think that that's necessarily the only way to do it, that, as Mrs. Cordera was talking about, just having somebody with a badge or somebody with authority doesn't mean you're going to change behavior. And it doesn't mean that that's proactive. Having more counselors on a high school campus, I think, is incredibly important. We're commissioning some help from UCSB right now through Erica Felix to come out and look at girl bullying, because it's so completely invasive and almost invisible that we need help. I think that would be along the lines of school security, a very good measure. So, but not exhaustive.
Thank you. Along those lines, one of the things that I, well, we just went through this with our breakthrough training. We know that the presence of adults on the campus outside of classrooms when students are moving in between periods is critical. And I would ask, and I have asked, that every teacher be outside the classroom during a passing period with inside of students that are moving around. And I think that is incredibly calming to kids. It prevents many, many problems. So that's, that's just one easy, not inclusive fix.
We spoke to the staff today about that, and there were a lot of nodding heads. They agree?
Thank you, Paul. And now, at the risk of having Mark come up and go, I haven't been there very long, Mark, maybe you can talk about some of the things at Del Campo that worked for you, and maybe shed some new light on your perspective at DP.
Well, Mark's actually had teachers on campus for a full day now.
Oh, my God.
So I guess we'll see what progress you've made.
So he's an old veteran.
I am, yeah. No, to that, to that effect, just a brief personal comment. It was a really fantastic first day. We had a really good interactions with the staff, and I thoroughly enjoyed meeting everyone and starting the beginnings of some dialogue and some staff development that I think are going to be very powerful for the school. So that having been said, we do the same thing, much the same thing that Santa Barbara High and San Marcos High do. We have our Student Responsibility and Discipline Guide, which specifically enumerates those offenses which are mandatory expulsions, those which are recommended unless there are extenuating circumstances, and those which may be recommended depending upon the severity of them. It's very clearly enumerated in there. And we also have the sign-off sheet, which states that students have read and understood, both in English and Spanish. Not that they've read them and understood them in English and Spanish, but that they've read them and understood them, and they're in both languages. In addition to that, it's interesting that this came up at this time for me, because I have been in ongoing discussions with my administrative staff, and then just recently today, with my full teaching staff about campus security, campus safety, and about consistency and discipline, and about the necessity of adults, all of the adults on campus taking on the role of school authority and being out on the campus and supervising the students. We had the very same discussion that Paul had, and there were a lot of shaking heads about teachers being out during passing periods. I didn't even know that Mr. Zettel was recommending that to them. But for me, one of the main issues is that kids are supervised at times when they are loose and about. So we also go out, all of the administrators go out to every single freshman class in the first two weeks of school, and again, go over those reasons and causes for suspension and expulsion. We're very clear about that. You asked us to address whether we do that all in one discussion. We do, in much the same way that Ms. Abney's teacher or staff does. We, we cover all those things, but in one block discussion. To my knowledge, there's no additional or special consideration given to counseling students of special needs with regard to the rules and regulations and the causes for suspension and expulsion. In terms of counseling students about alternatives when they do feel fearful, I think that part of that has to do with developing a culture on campus where the adults are trusted figures who you can go to. In my brief tenure here at Dos Pueblos, I think that we do have that kind of culture, and that students do go to the adults when they have questions and concerns. I think there is that kind of ongoing dialogue between teachers and adults and students, and that our teachers are particularly adept at getting kids to the right resources that they need, whether those be counselors or assistant principals, or youth service employees or counselors that work for the YSS. So I think we do have those things. And these are all, again, kind of anecdotal, because I haven't witnessed them firsthand. But I've spent much of the last six weeks talking to people about all of these very important issues and trying to get myself up to speed with them. We also have, you know, as the other schools do, an onsite resource officer, whose presence, I think, does communicate a message. In my experience, not having met Scott, but having heard good reports from him, Scott Hunter, who is our deputy on campus, my experience in the past, I've worked at campuses where we had school resource officers on site and then had them pulled back because of funding issues, and it makes a tremendous difference. You would be surprised how many kids really will go to a uniformed police officer and tell them things, even things that they might not tell, you know, the, the school employees who are constantly beating the drum, we're here to help you. They will go to the school resource officer and tell them things. I don't know if there's a guise of confidentiality there that they feel, or if they feel that this is really someone who has the authority to help them. But kids will go and talk to that school resource officer. I think it's an invaluable resource. With regard to gang issues, I'm told that in this district, and I know that in my past district, we had access to gang task force officers specifically trained in gang recognition and identification and, and law enforcement. And they are available to us here, I believe, as Mr. Morgan and I were talking in the back. They will be there at any time that we need them for that. If we identify kids who are having a problem, if we see kids grouping up and facing off, if we identify gang-associated behaviors, dress, posturing, that kind of thing. So we do have those resources available also. In terms of kids just being aware, though, of the fact that, you know, weapons are not allowed, selling and providing drugs is not allowed, fighting is not allowed, I think that our kids do get a clear message about that.
Can I ask a question? I'm going to address it to you only because we've had a couple incidents at DP, but I think it's, for all the schools, really, the topic of, or the issue of airsoft guns, which many kids think of as toys, and yet, because they can, look very real and can potentially cause problems with law enforcement seeing them in use and perhaps mistaking them for a real weapon. There was discussion about a separate flyer going out to the students, you know, with big, no airsoft. It really make that point clear, so it's not buried in the language, because they're more likely to be, you know, not taken as seriously as other weapons. Do you want to comment on that?
I think it's a good idea. Frankly, I think that, you know, the other two high school principals have talked, have mentioned that they had grade-level assemblies for all of their students. And I, I hope that I'm not speaking out of school here, because I don't know for sure. But I know for a fact that we speak to the ninth-grade class. I do not know that we do anything with 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. In my previous district, we did do that. And we did have flyers that we required to be posted in every classroom, which specifically laid out things and did specifically mention, you know, airsoft weapons. Now, those are mentioned in here. I know that you know that. And it specifically talks about replica weapons, whether they be guns, knives, or anything else. But I do think that because they are seen to be playthings, it is a good idea to, to notify students separately about that, or at least to put it in front of them on a regular basis so that they do remember. I have taken kids forward for expulsion for airsoft guns in my previous district, despite the fact that we had them posted on the wall, though, so.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I know that at Santa Barbara City College, when, when we want all of our students to, I teach there, we want all our students to read our syllabus, and we tell them, you know, you're accountable for all the information in the syllabus. And yet, halfway through the semester, we find out students never even looked at it. One of the things that we have often started doing, and I'm thinking that this might be something that all of you might consider doing with the handout that identifies this information, is rather than having them simply sign that they read it, we give them sort of like a worksheet that they have to fill in with information from the document, so that they're not just signing that they read it, they're actually reporting the information that is in it. And that at least gives us more of a sense that, in fact, they did see that information. They wrote it down. It somehow registered with them. And it also gives you the opportunity to highlight the particular things like airsoft guns that you think are particularly important, that they might miss. So, for what it's worth, that might be something we want to think about.
That's a very good suggestion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'd like to thank all of the high school folks that were here for your contribution to this dialogue. And now we have the singular representative for all of our junior high schools, Mr. Lito Garcia. Lito, we'd be glad to hear from you.
I don't know if the other principals would be glad to hear from me, but- Thank you for that, Jeff. I appreciate it. Just like all the other high schools that have just presented, La Colina, we do similar. We have the documents, the parent rights letter that goes out and have that returned. And, and we file that and make sure, we cross-check it with all the students on campus to make sure that every parent has signed that. We make administrative visits within the first two weeks of school, and we talk about the big five. And that is fighting, sexual harassment, racial discrimination, alcohol, drugs, and tobacco, and weapons. And so we address those immediately with the students, and we follow up the second semester, having that very same discussion. With the outreach, we, in going to the classrooms in the first two weeks, the biggest thing that we're fighting is that code of silence. And the message that we deliver to the students is, this is your school. Do you want to be sitting next to somebody that has a weapon? Do you want to be sitting next to somebody who has drugs? Do you want to be overhearing somebody making a racial slur or a sexual comment? Do you want that? And there's always that pregnant pause, and they're looking at me, and I'm, I answer for them. I'm assuming you don't want that. So what are you going to do? Are you going to let it go? Are you going to talk to your parents and have them give us a call? Are you going to talk to your teacher, the health clerk, the school psychologist, the, when the resource officer does come on campus, which is occasionally, with our reconnecting youth counselors, with the head custodian, there's a multitude of adults on campus who want to help. And so we try to find that one person for the kid to connect with so that they can feel safe. And I tell them, I don't want any of them waking up in the morning dreading coming to school because of those issues. And I'm hoping that they will break that code of silence. And it's hard. And we'll have parents who will call anonymously and say, do you know you have this particular problem on school? And we say, yes, we do. Can you provide me with some information that will help me bring that to an end? Well, I don't want to get involved. So on the adult level, we're still dealing with it. But if we can get these kids now to think about it, then when they are parents themselves, hopefully, they won't, you know, continue that, that problem. As far as students of special needs, we do everything that we can to provide any student on our campus with the information that they need, whether it's in the classroom and academics, or through the rules and regulations. So I don't know if there's any additional questions for me. I would like to address just quickly, though, the PE situation. Our teachers are there monitoring the students. There occasionally is problems, but there's occasionally problems all over campus. And I would not single out our PE department as having any type of problem over any other area on campus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that we do have one member of the public who wishes to address the board on this issue.
We do. Carolyn Renard.
I wanted to support the comments of Kathy Abney from Principal of La Cuesta and the La Colina principal, in the importance of establishing an environment where students feel safe, having, confiding in and having a relationship with at least someone at the school, and as, as a much more effective way of dealing with school violence. The research overwhelmingly shows that Mr. Turnbull at Santa Barbara High School would be a lot better off getting a school-wide positive behavior program in his school, rather than having more law enforcement on campus. Maybe it's necessary to have a show of law enforcement there now because of the authoritarian school culture that there is at Santa Barbara High School, and to a certain extent, I think, at all the high schools. But in the long run, look at the research. It clearly shows that these positive behavior programs and giving support to the students for, and expecting the positive behavior and having it actually be a program in the school has much more success than authoritarian- school has much more success than authoritarian punishment of bad behavior. The comment that there's a no tolerance policy on bullying, I, you know, that just, the people who do the bullying also have problems, and to just punish people who are bullies doesn't clear up any problem, it just probably makes things worse. And the, the, I mean, this is the 21st century, and psychology has, has evolved quite a bit from the, the 50s when, when it was black and white, but these things really need to be brought into the schools. They would save money, and they would work.
Thank you, Ms. Renard. Lane Wheeler.
Being an elementary teacher in the Santa Barbara School District for enough years to make Mr. Turnbull consider me a senior also, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to briefly speak on this. I teach first grade and at Monroe School, and we have established a longtime policy of anti-bullying and dealt with it in a progressive way, a positive approach, I think, and it's, I think it pays many benefits. We've had a posted anti-bullying poster that's been provided by the district for about four years. It did have a anonymous hotline that you could call, which was discontinued for, I guess, cost-cutting measures. Might be an interesting idea to continue that, to give people anonymous opportunity to contact sites. But I would like to stress the importance of this issue being dealt with by the board at the elementary level, because as we have the sixth grades in our, fifth and sixth grades in our elementary school, and the MTG, MTV generation kind of dumbing down the growth process so kids want to be older before their times, it seems like those, oftentimes, you see kids at that fifth and sixth grade level starting to assume the gang behaviors or the bullying behaviors, and I think the sooner we can deal with it, the better we can deal with it, and the more proactive we can be with it. So, I would like to hear Robin make sure that that, that process keeps being monitored and advised as we go into our school year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. I think that brings us to the end of our conference agenda, and we will return to those items that we pulled from the consent agenda. Ms. Malakoff, I think you pulled this.
Oh, I just, yes. I just wanted to, for my fellow board members, I just wanted to, to ask that if somebody is sick, that we should, courtesy, just to call and let either the board president or Mr. Sarvis, Dr. Sarvis, know before the meeting that we're going to be ill. Seems, other than that, that's all I wanted to say on that one. And I think I pulled D11. No, D10. And I wanted to ask, on the first page, about, D10, about there are two temporary new positions. I wanted to ask about that, and what was meant by temporary growth. Given our declining enrollment, I'm curious about why we have new positions.
We have Christine Robertson here to address that.
In particular, for instance, in the first situation with a teacher at Santa Barbara High School, there was a loss of a teacher in the video technology program, and a social studies teacher who had some appropriate coursework, in part, took over some of the classes, therefore, releasing some other social studies classes that need to be filled. Hence, the point eight new position. And he has plenty of FTEs to be able to accommodate that. Temporary new, or say, temporary replacing self, we had temporary teachers who were let go at the end of the year, or told they may not have their jobs back. Actually, were then able to get their positions back and replacing themselves in terms of the position they were in last year. So, that is what is meant by that comment. On the La Colina, as far as I know, that is basically new growth. They also have other means of funding some positions and may have had some extra FTEs to accommodate class size ratio, and therefore, were able to hire an extra staff member to help with class size. On the Washington Elementary, I'm not sure why growth was put down. They lost seven teachers, they replaced seven teachers. And they're not necessarily new positions, but they may be new staff, so.
Wow. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Dr. Robertson?
Yes.
I have a D10 question also, but I, I will wait.
One little thing is, again, not little, but that I, as I always do here, we have a retirement of over 18 years by Patricia Watson, instructional assistant at Washington.
Dr. Noel?
Yes, I, I want to ask some questions about stipends. An English department clerk, Santa Barbara High School, $18,483 for EIA, Economic Impact Aid, which has to do with English language learning, and Title I, which, in a targeted assistance school. I find this rather, well, I find this a continuation of a pattern at Santa Barbara High School.
Dr. Noel, I think the English Language Learner Department has been subsumed by the English Department at Santa Barbara High. I think it's all, it's one department designation.
Well, I'm talking about a clerk role. I'm not talking about a teacher. And, and as you know, there are, there are two relevant regulations, federal regulations. One is that the assistance has to be targeted. There are three. The, the other one, that means that only eligible students are, may benefit from the expenditure. The second one is that the money should supplant, not, pardon me, should supplement regular instruction, not supplant. And it seems to me the clerical staff is a regular cost of running a department, and that you put the money on, to charge that off on DIA LEAP or onto Title I, is to supplant rather than to supplement. And the third one is an overall calculation that 85% of those funds have to go for direct services for students. And I don't know whether this, whether this $18,000 is calculated into the overall district calculation on that or not, but it's a lot of money, and those are, those are funds that should go to help poor and at-risk kids directly, in my opinion.
Dr. Robertson, would you like to address that?
I beg your pardon, what?
I'm asking Dr. Robertson if she wanted to respond.
In terms of some of the duties of the English department clerk in this instance, Mrs. Anderson?
I'm having...
She is providing direct services to children through the English department in terms of services needed, taking care of documentation for some of the classes that they need to take, following up on test scores, placement levels. She's providing a variety of services to the LD department, as well as at-risk kids, as well as gate students.
And what is your answer to the, to the concern about whether it is supplanting rather than supplementing? That's a harder one.
Yeah, it is a hard one. It has been, she's been there a long time.
Well, I suggest we get the answer to those because, because it looks to me like Santa Barbara High School continues to be out of compliance on this kind of thing.
But why don't we have our Director of Compliance look into this and get that assurance from the school?
Yes, I think that's a good idea. Three rules. If one doesn't get you, the others do, it seems.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez will look into that.
Yes. There are three, there are two other much lesser amounts involved with, raise the same issues, summer prep packets for students and special projects bookkeeper. Again, using Title I or EIA LEAP for special projects bookkeeper is a very, seems to me very questionable, and I'd like to feel more confident that those funds are being used for what the federal government intends them for.
Do we want to act on item D2 and D10?
Can I ask a quick question about D2?
Yes.
Regarding whether we need to provide some sort of, I mean, what is the policy requirement there if you miss a meeting due to illness? Is there, do we spell that out in the policy as to when we call in?
Not that I recall, simply that it's permissible.
But...
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to be the subject of, of a debate here. I don't care whether you give me the money or not. I didn't ask for it. I was ill. I apologize to you, Mrs. Malakoff, that I didn't do you the courtesy of telling you, but, you know, you might wonder whether the illness, a particular illness, allowed that at the time before you snipe at it.
Okay. But I, I don't want the money. You can pull the whole item, as far as I'm concerned.
Then how did it get, if you didn't put it in here, who, how did it get in here?
I have no idea.
Well, I put it on when Dr. Noel told me that he was ill during that meeting, and it was based on the policy that permitted that, based on illness.
But if Mrs. Malakoff wants to make an issue about it, keep the 200 bucks. I don't, or...
My issue was only that we should notify beforehand if we can. I understand sometimes it's not possible, but it just, we waited...
It's not always possible when, when you have an active illness to do that, Mrs. Malakoff.
I didn't want to get into that.
And I would not expect you to do it for me, either.
Well, I...
Move to approve item D2.
Second.
Well, may I just comment that, in fact, board members were concerned about you, Dr. Noel?
Thank you. I appreciate that, too.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm not voting on that.
Okay, one abstention.
Move to approve item D10.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Item carries for one. Okay. Okay. Coming events, I think we have a series of open houses that are, I believe, published on the website. The dates are listed on the website. Is that correct or not?
They will be. We only have a draft list so far.
Oh, okay.
But they're starting September 6th and 7th at the elementary schools, as I recall, and they continue the following weeks, 13th, 14th at the junior highs and high schools. But don't forget, school starts this Monday. I would hope that the community would take note and help to ensure that all of our students get to school safely.
Great. That is important. I just want to comment that this morning's workshop by Susana Dutro was excellent, and I believe she's going to be presenting again on Thursday. Is that correct, to the secondary?
No, she was, she went back to Franklin School, and there were about 200 teachers that were there, and she will be back again tomorrow, all day with the same 200 teachers.
Ah, okay. So, she was wonderful, and I hope, I'm sorry that every, all the board members didn't get to hear her, but...
And that's thanks to Robin Sowaski.
Thank you, Ms. Sowaski. That was wonderful. Are there any other board comments?
Yes. Ms. Cordero and I have some comments about the UNIDev draft report, and I will pass that out and, and submit them so they can be submitted to UNIDev.
Very good. Thank you. I will make sure these get to UNIDev.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Items for future, or any future agenda items that we haven't already put forward? Hearing none. We'll move on. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be two weeks from today, Tuesday, August 29th, 2006, is that, oh, wishful thinking, I'm sorry. It is next week, Tuesday, August 29th. We will be meeting at, we'll, we'll be meeting at 7:00?
We will be meeting at 5:30.
Oh, at 5:00.
Didn't, didn't we decide?
Five to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Five to 7 is the workshop.
This is just next week. I'm sorry. I'm mixing that up with another one. You're right.
Okay.
5 o'clock to 7 o'clock is a workshop on facilities master plan.
Oh, that's correct, okay.
At 7 o'clock, yes, that will commence in the conference room, the workshop at 5 o'clock. At 7 o'clock, we'll continue in the board meeting here in this room.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Malakoff.
With that, we will declare the meeting adjourned.